See that everybody's doing it and in that process of doing the things they're supposed to be doing. So those are the differences that we're going to show. And that's one way we're going to show those differences and how we are representative of different facets of our communities. All right, so it's diverse. What we're, what we should be excited about in this room is diversity of thought. Because we have diversity of thought here. All right. Anything else, Diane?
No, thank you.
Anybody else have any thoughts on yesterday? Anything on, on the charter real quick that maybe stuck at you? Or the council rules that really came, came at you and just jumped out at you that we want to talk about real quick?
I have a comment about Diane. Diane and I are politically reformed. Okay, but Diane and I consider talk. And we all, all of us have the same goals. And how we get there is not necessarily the way some people want. And I'll give you a prime example of that. When the marijuana thing came up, I am 100% against that. I don't like it. People do it. And the council voted to let them do that anyway. And that's okay. And the public did too. But we, we are, I believe that we are trying, because of our diversity, we try to do, see, to get where all of us want to be, just how we get there. Kind of is kind of a little iffy sometimes, but we get there. So there's no reason to not say you don't like it.
You know, Wes talked about Tip O'Neill and Ronald Reagan. More recently, Ginsburg and, my goodness.
Scalia.
Right, Scalia. Opposite on the political spectrum, but they spent holidays together. They had dinners together with their families. That's important, right? We have to have that, that same mindset. We've got to be able to, we've got to be able to argue and then go have a beer afterwards. Or a glass of wine or a glass of water, wherever maybe your spice. We have to be able to do those things for us to move forward. So the key really is going to be at times forgiveness. Because one of you is going to, or me, or a staff member is going to say something that you're going to be like, oh, you did not. They did. And then you know what we got to do is we got to have a conversation, not in public. We have to work through that comment together and then we have to forgive it. And when someone comes to you and says, you said this and that upset me and it offended me. You have to be open to that person. You don't have to be sorry for what you said, but you should be empathic, empathetic to how the other person feels. Right? You talk, you work it out. And then we move forward.
I'd like to add on to that for a little bit. Two things that came out, you know, that I, I've seen a little over the times. One is, like you talked, agree to disagree. I've had councils in the past years where, because I didn't agree with somebody's mindset, vote in council. They actually held against you. And that shouldn't be how it should be. In other words, they, they weren't thinking about maybe what was he thinking about, why he made that decision? But you just always have to remember, you're, there's going to be times where you need to disagree. You have to move on.
Absolutely.
The other thing that resonated is you are a councillor 24/7. So as long as you are representing the city, you always got to remember that you are a city councillor 24/7. Be faced with that. You think, oh, just in city of Sweet Home. That's not the case. I had been out of Sweet Home. I had been actually miles and miles and miles away. And someone ran into me and tried to talk to the city shop. And you just got to remember, remember where you were at. You're always a city councillor.
Absolutely. And you volunteered for it. For a whopping $75 a month? About right? And the mayor gets a whopping $85.
Correct.
Yeah.
I want to, I want to read something.
I harassed him a little bit more than I harassed the rest of you.
I'd like to read something that John O'Leary said. I know you don't think I read this stuff. "We all know that while anyone can make a mistake, it takes commitment to really screw things up." And then also says, "There can be a tendency for the strongest personalities to exert great influence on the group thinking." And I think that can be true.
Absolutely. Group thinking is dangerous and it kills projects, teams. Is there any word of group think? You know, we get a whole bunch of like-minded people around the table and they go on their happy way and they don't consider, unintentionally oftentimes don't consider these other thoughts or processes or philosophies. So. Yeah, we want to avoid group think. So when we appoint committees, we want to make sure that we're appointing diverse groups of thought into those committees. Right? I'll give you an example. Albany got an issue with some committees that they got going on. And there was an article they talked about where they were trying to put diverse thoughts into that committee. So yeah, we just want to make sure we avoid group think whenever possible. Now, part of that means, and this is where we talked about naked trust. If, if you're in this, if we're having a discussion and Lisa has a thought that's a bit different than where the rest of the group is, and she shares that concern. One sign of group think is when the group, the group as a whole will offset the individual and dismiss that individual. And we can't do that. Okay? So we can't, so you as a person, whoever has this opposing or differing thought process, has to be able to express that and trust that they're not going to be chastised or, or made fun of in the group because of a different thought. Okay? Anything else, Diane? Anything? Sorry, I keep blocking your view.
No, 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 that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Well, I hope that you will do a couple of things today. Number one, I hope you'll ask questions. Basically, each department head is going to have about an hour with you today to present what, what they've worked on, the direction that they see their department going, and then answer some questions. A couple of things to keep in mind. Greg's area is, is vast. So we've got to let him get through. Greg knows his area is vast. And so he may not get into some of the details that you would really like. I think we have enough flexibility in the schedule. We can give Greg a few extra minutes if we need to. But if we do that, then we've got to make sure we hold the rest of us to our timeframe. So each of the, each of the department heads is going to talk for somewhere between 30 and 40 minutes. And then we want to make sure to 30 minutes for questions and answers and discussion. Greg, I'll give him a little more leeway. The other thing I hope that you'll do today is engage with the rest of the department heads in making fun of Jeff for wearing a tie and trying to make the rest of us look bad.
Showing respect for the audience.
And looking professional.
Thank you very much.
For the first time.
Feel very, very small now. Thanks, Jeff.
Good job. And as we go, the one thing that I, I want to, I get emphasized to you is we have been blessed with our department heads. And we've got a great mix. With Jeff being a homegrown, sweet home, he gives us as department heads a lot of history. And I got to do, so there's department heads and then we have what I refer to as the executive team. And that's why Julie and LaGirre here. The intelligence and the capabilities of our executive team is pretty vast. Very impressive, especially for a small community. I'm half joking when I say, I'm very aware that in my profession, there are windows. And I've said this from day one. There will come a time where you as a councillor will think that I'm not the right person for this job. And I understand that. But when that happens, I'm taking everybody with me if I can. Just so you know, when it's my time, and it will be, and I'm.
Yesterday, I mean.
The average city councillor is seven to nine years. It tends to be longer in small communities and shorter in metropolitan areas. Because as councils change and roll over, their priorities change. And so you're looking for somebody with some different skill sets that meets those priorities. And that's just the nature, that's just the nature of the beast. So when that time comes, you're not going to hurt my feelings. Well, I might hurt a little bit, but there will be that time where that window will close for me. And when that time comes, I'm taking everybody with me that I can. Just so you're aware.
We're not taking Julie.
Because, because I, I think the world of them. I respect them immensely. They have amazing talent. They're intelligent. They're thoughtful. And we have really built, I think, that team. Where certainly at least these two I know have no fear of walking into my office and telling me, no, Ray. We're not going there. And I need that, right? I need that. These others will do it as well. Jeff calls me fat. So we're, we.
Big bum.
Big bum. So I, I feel great about our executive team and where we are. I value their input. And, and I hope they know that I value their input. I think they do. And I think they feel pretty free to give it to me. There are of course times where there's just things that they don't know. And sometimes I'm like, yeah, that's just, that's not what I get, where the council wants to go. Not that they have a bad idea or it isn't even a better idea. But I'm like, yeah, that council's not there. Or that's not consistent with what we've been doing. And so we do definitely disagree. But again, I want, I want to make sure that you all have that same feeling that you can come into my office and say, Ray, I don't like this. Or hey, what do you think about this? So I will play devil's advocate. I will, so I will try and poke holes in whatever you bring to me because I think that's my job to help you through your thought process. And I just kind of enjoy it. I'll be honest with you. I enjoy poking holes at some people more than others. But I just do that because I want us to be great. I want, we have so much opportunity here right now. And stars, I swear to you, stars are, and planets are aligning if we can keep doing what we're doing. There are just a lot of things externally that are really coming together to help us as a community to grow and be successful. Anyway, and I'll, we'll talk about some of those as we, as we go through all of this. So any questions? Diane, how you doing out there?
Good, thank you. I'm listening.
Okay, you're not falling asleep on me, are you?
No, 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 no. I have my coffee.
Okay. So with that, I think we'll turn it over to Brandon if he's ready. Brandon's going to talk to you about finance, particularly budgeting, because we're going, we're, we're jumping into budget season here pretty quick. And I got to tell you guys, I get emails from him at 11 o'clock at night. No joke, he takes things home. He, like everybody, everybody in this room is dedicated to this cause and to this organization and to this community. And Brandon is, is an example of that. He drives an hour every day. He recently had a baby, took a little bit of time off until his wife decided she had enough of him. But the two kids were enough. She didn't need him at home too all day. And shipped him back to us. But I also share with you that when the baby was down and mama was getting a nap and the two-year-old, three-year-old was getting a little nap, Brandon had his laptop out and was always available to help us with things. He wears the finance hat. He wears the IT director hat. He oversees the court. And Brandon does whatever else is asked of him. Matter of fact, Brandon does a lot of things that are not asked of him. He just does it. And that was consistent when we hired him. Brandon had not been a department head before he got here. And he was young, as you can tell by looking at him. But when you did the background check on him, and when I do a background check, you know, you give me your references. I call your references and then I ask your references for references and I ask those references for references. So I tried to go at least three people deep on the reference chart, so to speak. To a T, everybody was like, the guy's super intelligent, hardworking and a team player. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit about those things later. But Brandon's a prime example of what we want to hire as we move forward. So with that, here's Brandon.
I don't think my presentation is going to do that justice. Okay, so finance encompasses a lot of things. My office handles a lot of functions that we'll kind of go over through this presentation. But I'm going to start out this morning first with talking about budgets. And it is a very high level overview of, of kind of what budget is, what it looks like for a municipality. Oregon budget, local budget law. And then we'll move further into kind of what finance entails. So that said, I'll make the clicker work. Okay, so the budget is not just a collection of numbers, but an expression of our values and aspirations. So that's important to remember as we go through this process. And budget, as Ray mentioned, is kind of starting up. And we'll really kick that into high gear here in the next couple of weeks. And you'll all be a part of that collaborative effort to figure out what is it we want to do in our next fiscal year. Oregon Local Budget Law is enshrined in the Oregon Revist Statutes, ORAS number 294. And there's two benefits to that. So it establishes standard procedures. So everybody across the state of Oregon is doing the same thing for preparing, presenting and administering the budget. And the best part about it is it requires citizen involvement. So that gives everybody in this community a chance to have their voices heard, have kind of their, their stamp on what it is their city, their city is doing for them. What is a budget? So a budget is a financial plan. It is something that we as department heads, they initially, we proposed to the budget committee and then later the council as, here's what we think you as councillors would like to see out of your budget each year. Here are the projects that we think you want us to complete. Here are the functions that you think, that we think you want us to serve as far as the community is concerned. But it includes both revenues and expenditures. When I talk about a fiscal year, our fiscal years run from July 1 to June 30. And so we have to set a budget every year to fit that timeframe. There are some organizations that do a biennial budget. So they do a budget that covers two years. Albany is one of those cities that does that. That's a recent development for them. We just operate on the one year, which maybe someday we will get to two years. But that's, that's also a lot of, a lot more work and a lot more, I guess forecasting to ensure that, that what you set as your budget is actually what will occur. Yes.
So if you went to a two-year and something goes haywire, you have to have a special meeting or something to take care of that?
Yeah, so in a, in the event of a two-year budget and in the event of your current budget, if things go crazy, then you have to do what's called a supplemental budget to, in order to either appropriate expenditure authority or make changes to, to fit the evolving need. And that's something, that's the one thing about a budget is, the budget is not necessarily so constrictive that you cannot, that you cannot move around. It's a living, breathing document. It is going to take revisions. My job and Ray's job, Ray is the budget officer for the city per the, for the code. Our job is to make sure that we bring you our best forecasts, that we try to pinpoint the revenues to the best of our abilities as close as, as we can. We're never going to hit the nail on the head completely. We're never going to be able to say, we're going to bring in a million dollars and we're going to bring in specifically a million dollars. But we're not doing our jobs if we're not in the ballpark. Because that million-dollar revenue line gives you the ability to say, okay, what are we spending that million dollars on?
Yeah, always try and make it six months.
Right.
Some, some cities like to cut it close at four.
Yeah.
I always recommend six months or more.
Our budget for 2021, which is the current fiscal year we are in, and to kind of help remind you what the fiscal years are, the fiscal year moniker is based on the year that the budget ends. So whenever June 30, in this case, 2021, that's the fiscal year that you are working with. So the budget that we're going to be developing here over the next several months is going to be the fiscal year budget for 2022. There was a time, I've been doing budgets for nearly 10 years now. And there was a time when it was hard to believe that we were moving into 2020. So it's still crazy to me that, that the further I get into this career line and, and further we get through fiscal years, that we'll be to the 20s.
The slides that you're presenting, are they printed?
I don't believe so, but I can print them so that you have them for. Yeah, actually, let me print them real fast and you can definitely do that. Those are printing and I think Julie's going to be kind enough to grab them off the printer for me. So a short synopsis, this picture comes out of a software that I will show you here in just a little bit. It's our new financial transparency and budgeting software that we're really proud of and one of the accomplishments of the finance office over the last year. But I'll kind of briefly go through this pie chart so you kind of get an idea of, of what we're looking at. This big green section right here is, as Ray alluded to, is Greg's budget. Public Works. Public Works, oops. If you remember, that's touchscreen. Greg's budget takes up 69% of our overall expenditures in a given fiscal year. Now, his budget right now is a little bit inflated because we have the wastewater treatment plant. But even without the $4 million line item in his budget, Public Works still takes up a lion's share of what this city does. The police department, I'll say follows closely behind, but really they're just a small part of the pie overall. And then it goes down from there. So community and economic development is this yellow section. Intergovernmental, which we'll cover, is the red. My Office, the Financial Administration, is the green and, and smaller from that window. Overall, we budgeted $29 million in expenditures for this current fiscal year. That's pretty large for us. Our gin, our average budget for, for the city of Sweet Home is about $23 million a year. But we have two ongoing projects, one in Sankey Park, using grant funds from the state of Oregon along with some city matching funds. And a subsequent, and the wastewater treatment plant, both taking up rather significant chunks of our overall budget. So this $29 million is really high for us, but is what it will look like probably for the next few years as we go through both of these projects and get them knocked off the overall checklist. So the budget process, it starts with development. And so Ray, as the budget officer, distributes the budget instructions to department heads. And what that looks like is, these are the confines for which you are allowed to, to set your budgets for the coming year. Are you allowed any additional personnel? Do we need to make any potential expenditure reductions? You can have an additional 2% in your materials and supplies budget. Whatever those instructions may look like, it is the budget, budget officer's responsibility to produce those for the department heads. The revenue forecasts are formed. Those are done out of my office. They include things such as property taxes, receipts for permits and other fees. And then the other major portion of our, our budget is utility fee revenue, which we'll cover in a little bit. The first step, which has already been done, is the departments submit capital requests to the finance department. I'm not there to decide the merit of the project. My job is to decide, will it fit into the budget that we have, the existing dollars that we have? We have fairly sizable reserves in most of our departments currently. But there are a significant number of projects that, as we get into a capital improvement plan, you'll notice, and I think there's a document in the binder, I don't have proposed funding sources for. Because I don't know where that money's coming from right now. On the water side, we have some, I think we have $8 million worth of water capital projects that need to be done. New water lines added or, sorry, upgraded from old two-inch galvanized mains, which I'm sure Greg will talk about. I don't, I don't know where that funding is coming from. So there's a lot of unanswered questions, but that's part of this process is, what can we fit into our existing budget without blowing apart our reserves and without leaving us in a precarious position? And a lot of that decision is made by you. How much is it that you want to hold in reserve so that we have something to fall back on? How much do you want to leave in a capital fund so if something goes catastrophically wrong with the water plant, we have something to, to stand on and we have some money to put into the plant should we need to? And that's where we all get paid big bucks to make those decisions. After I go through those capital requests and slide those into their budgets, then their worksheets will be distributed. They're really excited for those because they're going to get those in the next two weeks. And that kind of sets off a frenzy on getting their budget sent back to me so that we can get it to you. The next step is to propose the budget. So the budget document itself goes through three iterations. The proposed budget document, an approved budget document, and then adopted budget document, which we will cover all of them. For the proposal, it's Ray's job to compile the overall proposed budget and produce a budget message for you all. That budget message is kind of like an executive summary. It provides you with, here are the important things to consider. Here's what I know coming in the future. Here are the things that we are hoping to accomplish with this budget. So Ray is the one who, who produces that, that budget message each year and delivers that to the committee. Once the budget's delivered to the committee, it goes through public hearings, reviews by the committee. And I'll cover what that committee looks like here in a few minutes. And then the committee ultimately makes a decision based on their belief of what the budget should look like. You all are members automatically in the budget committee. And then there are seven additional at-large members on the committee to match you essentially. So 14 of you total. You all go through that, make decisions on, is this adequate funding? Does it need more funding? Does it need less? And you approve an overall budget with any amendments that you all choose to make. There are multiple opportunities in that point for open hearings to obtain feedback from the community. And that's the community's chance to be involved in that process. And again, they have a say in what their city is doing for them. After it's been approved by the budget committee, it goes down to adoption, which is it comes to the city council specifically. You have one last chance. There's one open, one more open hearing, another chance for citizen input. And then if there's any amendments that you as a council decide, whoops, this didn't get input or we really want to see this in here, you have that shot to get it in there and then adopt the budget. All of this has to be done before June 30th. Once the clock strikes midnight on July 1, our existing expenditure authority goes away if we haven't set a new budget. And what that means is, I'm sure you heard a lot over the last, yeah, 10 or 15 years of the federal government shutting down. That's essentially what would happen here. When the clock strikes midnight, if we don't have a budget in place, we have no pay for staff. We have no money to purchase equipment. We have no money for projects. Everything ceases until a budget is adopted. we have no money for projects, everything ceases until a budget is adopted.
So Brendan, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Excuse me.
So when, when it comes to council, if, if the council wants to make an amendment, if it's above a certain amount of money, it has to go back to the budget committee, doesn't it?
Correct.
So it's important, I think, for us to recognize that when we're in those budget meetings as part of that budget committee, we should be very thorough on what we want to do as far as amendments before it actually comes to the council for agreement.
Right. And, and to clarify, it doesn't necessarily go back to the budget committee, but it does have to go through a second public hearing. So if you change, after the budget committee has done the approval, if you change any of the budget lines, either 10% or $5,000, whichever is greater, um, then it has to go through a second public hearing before you can adopt. And because basically you want, everybody needs to have a chance to provide.
Okay, thank you.
But that does take time because those notices only go out once a week in the new era. And that's not to discourage that. I'm just saying that that's why we try to plan ahead so that you all have the budget early enough to review. We do, we've been doing the last few years. Um, we try to have the first, the first council meeting and the, the actual open, uh, open hearing in, on your last council meeting in May, and then do adoption in the first meeting in June. So that way, if there are any changes that you wish to make, we've got one more meeting in June before, before we have to have an adoption.
Well, in clarification, Brendan, council doesn't approve the budget like we had with staff meeting a year ago, so it has to go back through the whole process.
It does not, basically, once it's approved by the budget committee, that's what it is. And then if it's not adopted by the council itself, then the seven of you get a chance to basically figure out, what is it going to take for us to get this adopted? Um, so it, it becomes basically, uh, okay, what is it that you don't like in this budget? And what needs changing? And then if it meets that, that 10% threshold for another public hearing, um, then we, we relist it and go through the process. But yeah, we need, we definitely need time to make sure that if there are changes that, that may derail the overall adoption, that we have the time to kind of have those conversations.
Well, to clarify, I guess we had administrative fees a few years.
Right.
Now, came for council, remember how we had on that.
Yeah.
We had a hiccup there.
And that one, it went through the budget committee. It was signed off with, by the budget committee and then came to council and it went 4-3. So it was close. It didn't, it didn't get voted down initially, but, but it did, it was close.
Remember, it wasn't 4-3, it was a, we had to go back for re-discussion. Or finally got.
We had two meetings, like I was discussing, so we had one open hearing where there was a lot of, a lot of conversation and questioning, and then the actual vote came down to 4-3 in the last meeting in June. So that one is an example of if that had not gone 4-3 and we had to redo it, we would have had less than a week to adopt a budget. Um, and that gets, that gets a little crazy. So, cause some broad-based goals that, that we as staff, um, through kind of your direction shoot for with the overall budget. So the general fund, the police department and the library, we do our best to maintain six months of reserves. When we propose a budget document to you, we make sure that, and we even go to a point where five years out, we are, um, projecting a six-month reserve. And so what that looks like is we take our total expenditures for the year, um, for a given fiscal year and say, do we have enough money to cover half of, half of the year in our reserves? Um, however, while we strive to do this for you as part of the proposal, the budget's not up to us. We propose something and it is up to the count, to the budget committee and the council to determine what's appropriate. So last year, we proposed, um, specifically, I'm going to talk about the police department, we proposed a six-month reserve five years from now. Um, but that required reducing some staffing. It took some staff positions out of the budget and, and other expenditure reductions to make that six months happen. And the budget committee ultimately decided, that's not what we want for this community. We want you to put those positions back in, uh, and we will deal with that as it comes. So that's a perfect example of, we proposed what we think you are looking for, and maybe we're off the mark and that's fine. That's exactly how this process is supposed to go. This is your budget. This is the community's budget to, again, influence what they see out of their community and their tax dollars. Our goal out of these budgets is, you've heard this a lot, to do the most good for the most people for the longest period of time. Um, additionally, we do attempt to set aside funds for capital. So each year, there are transfers out of most of our budget, most of our funds, um, to set it aside for future projects. Some years are better than others. Um, we have done, um, an example, we've done a really good job over the last five to 10 years of, about, probably the last five years, of setting aside money to be able to use for the wastewater treatment. Being able to set that money aside has really bought us some good grace when it comes to obtaining additional grants from funding agencies and, and getting us some really low, low-interest loans, basically. Um, the city is projecting that it will be able to put $7 million of its own money towards the wastewater treatment. That's significant for a city of this size. Um, the state has then agreed to pony up, um, upwards, up to $9 million um, in, in grant funding essentially, funding that we do not have to repay. Um, and USDA, uh, initially had a, had a proposal for us to, um, get $3 million in a grant and then get a loan for the rest of it. So of a nearly $30 million project, we're estimating that we will only need to take about $12 million in loans. And that's really significant for a community like this.
If I can interrupt, that's unprecedented. Most communities can't do that and don't do that. And Sweet Home certainly doesn't, hasn't done that fast. They've been very reliant upon loans, um, which saddles them with debt, uh, which is then tied into your rates and causes rates to be increased in the end. Of course, an inordinate amount of, of interest. For us to be in a position to do that is, is rare and special, quite frankly.
And.
Last year, when we went, last year before we went over to Bend, and Greg and Ray proposed what they, what we needed to do, and everybody in that room was shocked that we were able to get to that $7 million. Uh, I had a lot of the guys, city managers and city councillors come to us and say, whoa, which is pretty amazing.
And the biggest thing that allowed us to do that was the council having the courage to raise the rates. Our first step was we raised sewer rates and we raised it enough so that, because we had, we were operating in the red at the time, which is illegal. But we raised it enough to where we could not only cover those costs, but put money away so we had skin in the game. And once we sat down with, um, with representatives in Salem and explained to them, it became, it was actually pretty easy because they, they saw that we had buy-in. We weren't just coming in crying like every other community, asking for a handout. We were taking steps to make sure we could get the project done. And so the, the linchpin to us being where we're at in this project right now, uh, quite honestly, is the council's courage to raise the rate. And, and honestly, to do like you do in your home budget, because with our home budget, you know, you save money up for that new purchase. Uh, for some reason, a lot of governments don't seem to think you have to do that. They just want to borrow, borrow, borrow and incur debt, debt. Just like your home budget, that's not real healthy all the time. There's times to do that, when you can leverage that debt, uh, or you get 0% interest rates or those kinds of things, but for the most part.
And that was a hard decision for the council at the time to make. That impacted citizens in this community. That was a $25 a month increase for some people.
Well, to go back to a little bit of a hip, for those that weren't, the council back years, years ago, because of the economic challenges the community has faced, the council at that time chose not to freeze rates, which came back around and bit us in the hind end. So that's also why the public took a sticker shot when we had that job too. But it was such an outrage, we landed. You know, hindsight, looking back, the council should not have froze the rates. We should have had at least a little bit of a, a bump in those rates over those years instead of the freeze. Because like you say, it came back and bit us hard.
It hurts yet.
You know, it's interesting, we're, we're almost close to 90% on that project and Brendan just put in for reimbursement. So the state has pretty much given us almost all of our money for design. And we haven't even, city hasn't really even paid for anything on this project yet, so.
Shh.
Kind of cool.
Brendan, is there another committee where we can talk about this more? You guys talk about this wastewater thing more? Who hasn't went out to bid, you know, who's going to? We haven't, the, so the, so far, we've only gotten through engineering. And so the net, over the next probably four to six months, then those engineers will help the city to put together the bid documents and get ready for their construction plans.
Yeah, I've got all the dates and deadlines.
Right.
Probably talk about my presentation.
Oh, great, thank you.
Basically 90% June, final design September, contract bidding December, commence January, February 22. So we're looking a year out, break ground. So kind of have to.
And then you know how long the project was.
Yeah, it's supposed to terminate at the end of 20.
2024?
Yeah, December, like, it's like Christmas Day or something. So we'll see.
Two to three years is the current estimate. All right, so we've talked a lot about, I've talked about the process and I've mentioned the budget committee a lot. So what is this elusive budget committee? Uh, the budget committee is mandated by state law, that ORS 294 that we talked about. Um, it consists of the city council, the seven of you, and an equal number of citizen members. Last year was the first year, the, at least since I've been here and, and for a few years before me, was the first year that we actually had seven community members on that, on that committee. So that was really exciting, um, for us. Um, the citizen members of the budget committee serve a three-year term. Uh, and we try, the law requires that we try to shuffle those as evenly as possible so there's, there's always some turnover each year on the committee potentially, unless people are reappointed. Um, but, so that there is, there's always some movement on the committee without ditching all seven members at the same time. Um, the budget is a very large document. It's 100, it was 135 pages previously. It's a lot of information to go through and for somebody, for that, for that committee to turn over all seven of them at the same time, it makes it really difficult for a city to, to really get any traction. Um, so they stagger those terms so that, that you have some knowledge on the committee, institutional knowledge, year after year. All right, our budget document. So one of the, the crown jewels of the accomplishments this year for the finance department was moving towards, um, a paperless system. The entire finance office at this point, for all of our receipts, for all of our documentation and everything else, is paperless. That's exceptional for a finance department. Paper is the lifeblood of a finance department and I hate paper. Um, so I'm not traditional in that regard. And I, when I started here, it was my biggest push to force this organization, at least the finance department, to go paperless. Um, all of our documents are stored online in our, what they call ERP or enterprise, um, resource program. Um, and our auditors have access to that. Um, anybody who, who calls and requests some, um, public records, um, does a public records request, they have immediate access to all that documentation without going through boxes and a filing. So we're really proud of that. But the next step of that was moving to an online platform. Um, so that's what we've done with the budget. Um, and I think this is the. Oh, I should probably. Councilperson, I'm sorry, you probably can't see any of this, can you? Does anybody have any questions on, on?
Why weren't you prepared?
I just had to. I even made it a link, so I didn't have to go digging for the thing. Okay, so on your screen is our new digital budget book. Um, again, really excited about this. Um, it's, we used it, um, to publish the, the 2021 budget, as you can see on the screen. And that was the first year we, we got to use this platform. Uh, our hope is that it will give the community, uh, and, and folks from the outside, from outside this community, the chance to go through the budget document without trying to flip through 135 pages. You can find what you want here. It's, it's got a navigation of its own. Um, if you choose to do so, you can print individual sections based on what you specifically are looking for. There's a lot of functionality in this system that, that gives, um, folks the ability to get, to find the information they want. Um, as far as kind of the, the navigation for this, the navigation of this system follows what our budget book used to follow. So we have an introduction, an introduction section that talks about, uh, here's the budget message from Ray, um, but that was part of last year's budget book. Um, we go through and we list any of the approved changes. So remember, proposal is what city staff gives to the budget committee. The approved budget comes out of the budget committee itself. So the budget committee approved these specific changes from what staff had proposed originally. We list that for transparency sake. Everybody needs to know what this budget document has and the, the iterations it has gone through. Um, and then the adopted changes from the approved budget. This little blurb here says, the city council didn't make any changes and adopted the budget on May 19th, 2020. So we were ahead of the game last year, which is awesome. Um, there are also, there's also some general information about the city overall. There's an organization chart, um, that shows general organization of the city. The important stuff starts with budget overview. Um, so there is a summary for folks to go through and a consolidated summary that outlines our revenue lines and our expenditure items. Um, and we do group things by personnel services. So that's our staff across the city. You all are included in that line. Uh, the materials and supplies, capital outlay, our debt service. Transfers is always going to say zero unless we're transferring money outside of the city, but we have not done that in the past. Um, and then you're ending fund balances. So one-stop shop, this entire website gives everybody what they need and has resources to find the information they're looking for. Um, I, this is available on the finance website. So if you go to sweethomemar.gov/finance, click on city budget. Um, it tells you how to access this. I would encourage you all to flip through this when time permits, um, so that you're kind of, you, you have some information on at least what this year's budget looks like. Year over year, you shouldn't see any major swings in budgets. Now, there are going to be some exceptions from that, for that each year, and, and we'll talk about some of those. But typically, if, if everything's moving smoothly and all of our reserves are funded, you shouldn't see any major swings in, in the budgets. Does anybody have questions about this document here? Okay, our goal, Ray doesn't think this is going to happen, but we're going to find out. Our goal is that you all have city-issued computers. Our budget book this year, when we deliver that to you, when, when staff delivers the proposed budget, will be here. Now, the law requires that we have paper copies available for those who want them and we will certainly oblige. Um, so we can print out of the system, as I mentioned before, but. So we can print out of the system, as I mentioned before, but the initial delivery to you all will be in this system. I'll get a big old binder this year. I'll get a binder for you.
Well, he's hiding up.
I'm sure you're a choice that. I mean, if I asked you, you're going to give.
Exactly. As the law requires, I will give you one at that point. The city does the budget. We don't do two budgets, but it is broken down in different ways so that we meet the state's requirements for a budget. And then we believe that breaking the budget down into individual departments is a good way for people to see kind of a consolidated what is happening. So we have both of those in this document and I will just click on finance for a minute. A little old picture of everybody. And then it goes through and talks about the department as far as its budget overall. So in this case, we're talking about the expenditures, the expenditures for the finance department. There are graphs in here that are interactive. So I can click on fiscal year 2014 and I can see the $202,334 accrued. We budgeted $202,000 and we spent $202,000 that fiscal year. The red means that's an over expenditure from what was initially budgeted. And then certainly at the end, in this little light green box, that's what was budgeted for the current year. So for finance, $557,398. Somebody is bound to ask, well, why did you go from this line in 2017 up to these much taller boxes in 2018 and beyond? We added some people to our department from public works. So that in 2018, the finance department took on the responsibility of utility billing. So that's the reason for the jump. But you get to see all of that in this, in this platform. So that's really exciting. At least it is for me. We go through expenditures by expense type. Each of the departments has these sections so you can find all of this information. How much are we spending on salaries and wages? How much are we spending on employee benefits? And then kind of a historical trend for each of those. And then of course, the spreadsheets. I love Excel. Some of you know that, some of you share the love of Excel, some of you don't. Ray's not in the room for me to make fun of him and his lack of love for Excel. But he and I are on very different ends of platform in regards to Excel and what it does. Okay, so that's all I have to go through here. And then, like I said, we do have fund by fund summaries as required by the state of Oregon so that you can kind of get a feel for what that looks like. All right, that is all I had to talk about for Budget 101, so I'm going to move into purchasing in the state of Oregon. We spend a lot of money every year and there are rules, specifically ORS 279, A, B, and C, that dictate how we spend that money. So we're going to go through, again, very high level overview of what that looks like. Stop me if you have questions. This part of the presentation does not have pretty pictures and is very dry. So I apologize in advance. If you have your coffee, you might need to top it off. So as I said, ORS 279, A, B, and C dictate public contracting and purchasing in the state of Oregon. All state municipal organizations, counties, districts, everybody has to abide by this if they are basically an entity of the state. ORS 279A specifically establishes the authority for procurement in Oregon and here in Sweet Home. It allows for personal services contracts. It establishes local contract review boards, which in the, in Sweet Home, the local contract review board is the seven of you. So if there are any issues or things that need review, that's up to the council to determine. It establishes model rules for adoption, which we're going to talk about here in a little bit. And then also has provisions for subcontracting to emerging small businesses or businesses that service disabled veterans own. Basically what that allows for is for the city to require that a contractor that we hire, so as part of the RFP process, the request for proposals, we can require that contractors utilize materials or actual labor from subcontractors that fit these two certified categories, small businesses or service disabled veterans.
So is that a goal or a requirement? Because that's something that I have run into as that type of firm, is that they just solicit numbers, but they don't actually put people to work.
Right. State law, it has the word "may" in it, so it doesn't require us to do it, but it allows us to do it if we want. So that would be basically a council decision of, do we want to specifically in our request for proposals each time, list that contractors are required to use these, these items for...
And then I know when I have bid on federal projects, there's been a clause that said, hire local if you win this award. So does the city have anything like that, say for the wastewater treatment? They would say percentage of people that you hire have to be inside of the city to put our people to work?
We have not done so far. It doesn't mean we can't. ORS 279B establishes the methods for source selection. So this is really the meat of kind of the purchasing rules in Oregon. It establishes the competitive bidding or competitive proposals. If it's a competitive bid, which is, you have to use a competitive bid if over a certain dollar threshold, $150,000, is that, is that limit? If it's a competitive bid, the lowest responsible bidder is what you have to choose. So for example, when the city did this building, the overall project was estimated at $1.2 million, I think overall, we were required to go through this process to do a competitive bid, to find a construction company to, to do this, a contractor to do this building, and we were required to choose the lowest responsible bidder. So the city has some flexibility in determining who, what lowest responsible bidder means, but we basically open...
And the contractor that does prevailing wage too.
Right. Yes, prevailing wage is a requirement in, in city contracts, city construction contracts.
We had opened, originally the discussion was we'd open it up for local contractors. We could get, we could get bids way more than what we were, we did have, because they weren't, they, if they had the wage, you cannot use them.
Well, they shouldn't kind of work.
But I mean, just clarifying.
That's not a trick.
And we did ask this contractor if they would use locals, like who doesn't really want materials from, but they have local people. And so that's where they go.
And that's, that's part of, that's part of the competitive bidding process too, is they do have, you know, they have arrangements worked out with, with suppliers, with subcontractors, and so that goes into their cost consideration when they're building.
I mean, such as laborers, like you need to hire 20% of your laborers from people that are in town, because we don't have, we have a lot of unemployed people here. So if they can find people in town that are unemployed that want to work, then a certain percentage should go back into our town.
Yeah.
The problem is, that's a big guess. That's a big guess. I don't...
And you can, you can...
And finding somebody that will even want to do projects is difficult.
When we did, when we did the bidding for this building, we only got, we got the minimum. We got three bids. We didn't get any more. They're small. I mean, finding contractors to do projects in Sweet Home is not...
Can I come back to some of your points? The effort wasn't made trying to bring in local. We just weren't able to.
But we can include specific language in those, in those requests, request for qualifications or request for proposals. You can include specific language that says, you, if you are chosen for this job, you will...
I mean, if they're going to get $30 million, a couple of millions should go back to the people that live here and work on the projects in the town.
True. The wastewater treatment plan, I definitely think will draw more contractors to bid because of the size of the project. The overall construction budget for the, for that project, I think, is 24 million and change. So it's a significantly larger project than this building. And even, you know, the school district had more offers when they were doing the junior high and things like that because of the size. 1.2 million back when we were doing this building, construction was a hot market. Everybody was building. And so finding the three bidders even for this building was difficult. But based on the size of the wastewater treatment plant project and some of the school district projects that have occurred, it's easier to find contractors when...
You've got to remember the contractors that are bidding us are big, big companies. You know, State will probably be one that is going to be in on the project. They are not absolutely local, but they're regional. So I don't know, I guess we could put stuff in, you know, some of our supporting bids or documents and stuff like that, but I think we're going to have a good, a good opportunity in, in selecting a good, you know, contractor. But do we want to hinder how they're going to do business? Can we hinder how they do business? And can we dictate that? I know we have to dictate that they pay prevailing wage.
It's in federal contracts, hire local is part of certain bids.
What's local? I guess that's...
Well, that's probably open to interpretation, but if somebody could at least do some footwork into having a job fair or something in town, say, we have this project here, come to the job fair, nobody shows up, then nobody shows up. But if some people show up and they meet the requirements, then...
I'm not opposed. I guess I'm, I'm concerned that we're going to find 20% skilled labor in town that's going to build a municipal wastewater plant. That's my concern.
Well, we want a lot of construction workers in town, but they work for companies out of town. And they will drive to Portland, they'll drive to Salem, they'll drive to Eastern Orient, wherever the job is at. And so they're already here, but the companies they work for aren't. And so...
They might be able to start a new company and get some of that work. If it's going to be two to four years long in economically developed city, they see an opportunity for a long-term project.
And it goes back to the conversation, I mean, yesterday about the building and the investment in trying to create job opportunities here. Our priority is to get a wastewater treatment plant built and whoever that company hires, we're lucky if they're hiring locals, and they probably will. But our job is to stay focused on making that as effective for the least amount of money possible for the good of our community. We need to stay focused on the tough, not on the working, like what they say, you know? So, yeah, I'm really big on buying local, really big on local jobs and economic development is a huge, probably like the number one priority for us. But we have to stay focused on our role in this and so...
And certainly there is benefit to contractors choosing from local, local folks, because then it, it reduces their, their mobilization costs. If the labor's already here, you know, that, that gives them the ability for, you know, more, a better timeframe as far as the hours that are worked and travel times and all that. So there's, there's certainly benefit to them and I believe that most of them try to, to the best of their abilities. But specifically as far as the city's concerned, we don't, we haven't put any language in like offense has.
I just don't think there's going to be another opportunity that's great for our community for some time. So we can utilize that to help the people that live here as much as we can, if there were a way that would be beneficial for everyone.
We'll do, well, Greg and I and probably Ray will do some of that like work before we end up bringing some of those, those documents to council for review and approval before they go out for, for bid and see what we can do.
Well, I, I know a lot of business owners in town and they can't get help. They cannot get help. If you look on the, on the list of jobs that are open, I'll give you an example, CDO writers. They cannot pass the test. They can't pass the test. And so that's a big issue. And I will say this, most big companies, and I could be wrong, most big companies have a crew that they use. Now, they may hire people outside of that crew, but I can guarantee, I know a guy that did this for wastewater chain water for people, and this branch passed now. And they have their people and that's who they use. But there's got to be...
The reports that they pull from union shops and those things.
And if, I, I agree with you 100%.
Prevailing wage is a great incentive though. $15 an hour for your CDO, not so much. $50 an hour to drive a truck, that's slightly...
Oh, I understand that. I understand that. You still have to pass that test and that's, I'm not, I'm not arguing with you, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I, I don't know.
You just have challenges that are set forth trying to achieve what you're trying to accomplish.
Yeah. So I agree. We, we tried to do that when we built this thing. We tried to get them to...
Our options for building this, for renovating this building were limited.
Yes.
Very limited.
Now, this is a good discussion because in Oregon right now, contractors are busy. Maybe not right at this moment, but contractors have been busy. The example was concrete, you know, and it took, well, we used to get them scheduled and to get them out there on their schedule, when we hounded them out there.
Glad you brought that up.
There's just not that many concrete. They're all being sucked up to all the houses along by I-54. You know, the wastewater plant will be a different animal. It's different contractors, different size. I know we can put provisions in and I think it's a good thing to reach for. I just think we need to be cognitive of the reality of what they can drop. And I think it would be cool to keep some of those funds here as well, especially since it's coming from the state.
I'm glad you brought that up, Greg, because I'm just from a private sector and I'm trying to get a comfy patio for 16 weeks.
So it's just, it's just tough times and, and I would hate, I would, I would love to make all the people come from this town and pay, and I just don't want to put ourselves in a position where we're forced to have unskilled labor and maybe not even enough labor. That's all.
I think we've kind of gotten off the rails here.
Yeah.
I, I think ultimately, no, and then these are good questions and this is good for the seven of you to kind of work through as well, because this is all stuff that, this is going to come up and sooner rather than later in, in, in the work that you're going to be doing. And so having these conversations now will make this process easier and gives staff the ability to start, to start researching these options. So that, again, the goal of this training, I said the R-word, the goal of this training is to not only disseminate information to you all to make your lives easier, but also to, to get your feedback and your goals and your wishes from staff so that we know how to move forward over the next at least two years. So this is, this is good conversation to have, especially... Okay, so pre-tap, competitive bidding, you don't get any say in, in what's in those documents. You open the document, where's the lowest price tag? What's responsible? You know, do they have everything in it? Did they forget something, whatever? Choose that lowest responsible bidder and that's what you go with. If you're doing a competitive proposal, you get to pick, you get to select your vendor based on ranked criteria. So in those request for proposal documents, you're putting in, these are the things we're going to grade you on, these are the things we would like to see from you. You can then rank on that and price can be the lowest rank. But then you're basing it more on what they have proposed to you instead of just a straight dollar figure. Small procurements, the state considers those as contracts or purchasing that is less than $10,000. So if it's less than $10,000, we only have to get, we can basically select somebody without kind of additional digging. And some of that, which we'll talk about, the local contractor review board, you all have designated that authority for that determination to me as the finance director. Intermediate procurements, so purchasing that ranges anywhere between $10,000 and $150,000. That's a wide range, yes. But for the intermediate procurements, our requirement is that we get three informal quotes. So we have to go out and find them to the best of our ability. So we have to go out and find them to the best of our abilities. Again, we have some exceptions, we'll go over those shortly. Sole source procurements. You all, as the local contract review board, has the authority to determine sole source. Except then you delegated that authority to me. So what happens is, for example, we have some work being done. I think it's at the water plant. We're looking for software right now for the water treatment plant when we take it over. Actually, Hawkwinds, I don't think it's Skating. We're looking for software right now and the public works department came to me and said, this is the vendor we want to use because they have the software that best fits our needs. And there isn't anybody else really that does this. With that knowledge, I can then determine, I can tell them, yes, you can choose that vendor even though you're not going out and finding your three quotes. Or I can say, I need more information. As of right now, I need you to go find three. So the departments, basically, if they are spending anywhere between ten thousand and twenty-five thousand, no, and a hundred and fifty thousand on one particular item, they have to either find those three quotes or ask for an exemption. Okay, the local contractor review board. You all, the city council in the past, has decided on a list of exemptions from purchasing requirements. So we're going to roll through them very quickly. We can certainly provide you a copy of the overall rules if you would like to see that. And I believe it's on our website, probably somewhere. But you all have defined additional exemptions beyond those allowed by Oregon statute. So those include the contracts for price or supplier regulated items. So if there's something out there that you can only, the state or the feds have decided that these are the only ones that can provide this or, you know, they can only provide that to this price, you can go with that without finding three quotes. Copyrighted materials, advertising contracts, some of these are self-explanatory, so I'm not going to dig into them unless you have questions. Requirements contracts. A requirement contract is basically the purchases of goods or services pursuant to a contract between the city and a contractor that already exists. So if you, for example, in this building, if we've already gone through the request for bids, we have our selected vendor, our selected contractor. Anything that falls within the subs, basically, we don't have to go out and find three quotes for. It's part of that original contract, it's a requirements contract, they just get to move forward. Investment contracts. That's something that we started using this year, we're really excited about that. But basically the work of investment services or banking services to support those investments, we don't need to go find three different vendors to ask, what are your rates? Single seller items, repair contracts and insurance contracts, those are all on the list. Contracts for asphalt, concrete and rock. We do not have to go out and find three different vendors for. Contracts under twenty-five thousand. So I've put a little asterisk on this. If a contract is less than twenty-five thousand, then you can, the city has decided you don't need to go find different quotes. We don't have to go ask three people for a single project. So if one project costs you less than twenty-five thousand, you can find your vendor and you can go with it. Or if the overall contract is for blanket projects, say, like we have a contract with Cascade Timber Consulting. And if each of those projects underneath that contract are going to be less than five thousand, you don't need to go find three different vendors to give you what CTC is going to give you in this case. Otherwise, anything outside of those rules, you've got to go find three different vendors and you need to basically get a quote. Most of these rules follow the intermediate purchasing. So that ten thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand, so all the way up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the city needs to find three quotes unless it falls into one of these. Contract amendments, so you can amend a contract that already exists without going to find another vendor. Data processing contracts. So for example, our contract with Step Up IT to provide third-party IT services for the city. If it's going to be less than twenty-five thousand, you need to find three quotes. If it's between twenty-five thousand and a hundred thousand, we have to get written proposals. So that's a little bit of a difference compared to what the state of Oregon is. Trolley and products, event service contracts, banking services, this one's important and we are currently embarking on this one, I'll explain later. And nutrition services. And then the last page of items on the list, transportation services, used equipment, ballot printing services, library materials, the library uses this one a lot, they can buy books, without having to go find three vendors, that would be kind of cumbersome for them, I think. Equipment with credit for trade-in. ORCPP agreement purchases. This item is a state contract with the Department of Administrative Services. Basically, they maintain a database of preferred vendors. We'll call them for various project types, purchasing, equipment, whatever it may be. If the state already has basically a state contract with a vendor, you can pick them without going to find two others. So as long as the state has already done the legwork for us to find the best option, we can piggyback essentially off of state contracts. And then there's piggyback purchases. Piggybacks. Need my notebook? Where's my notebook? Here it is. Okay, so piggyback contracts, we can piggyback off of the state. That's this this agreement purchases line. The piggyback purchases are from other organizations. So say the city of Medford, for example, has a contract for streetlights with a company. When we decide we want to do something similar, that city of Medford contract has a clause in it that says other municipal organizations may use this contract for their projects as well. So it has a clause in it that we can piggyback off of that contract to get the same stuff. So we're allowed to use that without going to find additional vendors. Now, all of these are exemptions in ways of which we are allowed to do these things. Doesn't necessarily mean we have to. In some cases, it is still beneficial for the city to do some legwork and maybe find additional vendors. Because maybe we just haven't done the work to figure out what's out there, or maybe we can get a better deal and we don't know it. Sometimes, for example, Public Works, when they're purchasing equipment, they will go find an item out in the markets. Let's say a truck, like we purchased two vehicles, I think, from Premising.
Yes.
We purchased two vehicles recently from Premising, Lebanon, two Chevys, one for the for the maintenance superintendent, sorry, operations manager.
And then we did two Chassis.
Two Chassis. Anyways, Premising is not an organization that has a state contract in. So they gave us their price. And because they don't have anything, because it met the dollar threshold, it was, I think the first truck was twenty-five, twenty-seven thousand. We told Public Works, we need to go find some others. Well, they went to the state and found a state contract and found that Premising was actually less. So yes, they only got two, but because they went to a state contract and that state contract was still more, our purchasing policy says that they can go with Premising because it is less than what the state's contract was for. So that's an example where we can go with one of these exemptions or we can go out and find something else on the market, even though this exemption exists, and benefit the city. And we saved three thousand dollars on that truck. Disposal of assets. We don't have a loader that looks like this, so not as nice as this, but I stole the picture from stock. Stock images on this. The fact that this is a stock image is really important because the individual who manages communications for us would have let me hear about it later if this was not a publicly available image. So I just wanted to highlight disposal of assets. We've done some with you all already and we are planning to bring you more. But the Sweet Home Municipal Code, I typed that wrong on my screen. Chapter three point zero eight dictates the authority for disposition of city property to Ray. Ray basically could say, yes, this asset is no longer usable or benefiting the city of Sweet Home and therefore can be disposed. We have been bringing those to the council because, one, I think you all should know what is kind of going, it's part of the budget process, you all need to know what we're doing with our assets. But that is a, that exists in our policy right now, that the city's disposal of assets and how that looks is dictated in the municipal code. This includes anything that the city has capitalized. Before I got here, the capitalization threshold was anything that was two hundred dollars or more. So we were capitalizing computers. We were capitalizing some of these tables that you might be sitting at, chairs that we have in the office. These were all capitalized. And I started pulling my hair out, you can tell it's receding a lot.
Do you want to explain what that means as far as the workload?
Yeah.
What did you see that?
But I was also going to say that there were times where the city even capitalized items such as a footrest that initially cost the city seventy-nine dollars. I can't tell you as the finance director where that footrest currently resides. However, capitalizing an asset means that we have to do a lot more work in tracking and ensuring that that item exists. It has impacts, financial impacts on our audits for accumulated depreciation figures. The impacts are funds as far as from a financial aspect. And then once it is ready to be disposed, it has to be disposed of according to the municipal code. Which means we have to go through a process to say, yep, this is an asset that can be disposed. Oh, and then our municipal code says that you are required to dispose of these assets via public auction. It specifically highlights public auction as a requirement for disposing of these items. Now, if something is broken, say, this desk lost a leg, we're not going to auction that to the public. It's a danger to the public because it only has one leg and a table doesn't stand on one leg. We have also not publicly auctioned off computers formerly owned by the city. And we utilize our IT contracts, our existing contracts to dispose of those assets so that city data is properly destroyed from those old machines not at risk of being recovered down the road. So there are some items in which in existing contracts, we have not done the public auction, but otherwise, everything else, that footrest, when I find that seventy-nine dollar footrest, will be put up for public auction. So there's a lot of administrative work that goes into fixed assets. Which is why, probably a year after I got here, we changed that capitalization threshold. Really, the auditors were thankful, to match what the state requires for capitalization, which is five thousand dollars or more. So if an item costs more than five thousand dollars, we're required to capitalize that and track it differently than anything else. So we don't capitalize our computers anymore. We don't capitalize the chairs you're sitting in so that when they are defunct, when they are no longer useful and they need to go away, it's easier for us to do so. Questions to this point? I burned past my hour, didn't I?
Yes, you have. I'm only forty-five minutes down.
All right, I'm going to go really fast in my department because I've talked a lot and I don't have a lot to my department anyways. Finance department, I told Ray I was putting this in here, the bread and butter of Sweet Home's operations. Because what do we do? Well, we manage our general ledger, we are the accounting department. Everything that deals with money, that's us, and guess what, that's everything. Accounts payable, that's us cutting checks to vendors for the services that we ultimately need from folks or for the supplies that we need or for the cars Jeff buys, whatever it may be. Accounts receivable and utility billing, our office handles utility billing for Public Works. And any money that we, the city, are due. Audit is our function, budget is our function, payroll is particularly important because people love getting paid, I've discovered. My wife likes getting checks as well and purchasing. So those are our functions in the finance office. Additionally, as Ray mentioned, the finance office, the finance department overall encompasses both the finance office specifically and then also is the umbrella organization for the municipal court. So we, I as director oversee municipal court. And they do a litany of items related to crime and justice, so to speak. So if Jeff's department issues a citation or there's a complaint, the Sweet Home Municipal Court is responsible for following through on those items. In the municipal court, there's one municipal court judge who does not answer to me. That individual actually answers to all of you. So Judge Blake, Larry Blake, is the judge currently. And he answers directly to the council, your point. In my department right now, this is me, I have three folks in the finance office specifically, three full FTE. And over in the court office, I have one full-time court administrator. And I have two point six FTE or twenty-four hour a week court clerk choose. Ryan, Ryan Daniels, is our newest court clerk, he just started in December. But yeah, this is my department right here. This is the smallest org chart you will see except for Ray's. No, even smaller than Ray's because Ray has all of us. So this is the smallest org chart you will see today. No, it's not. No, it's not. Maybe it is. I like to think it's the smallest one. We are making some staff changes in our office. And that isn't to say I'm asking you all for a new position because I'm not, although I'd love to. But what that means is we're moving around some of our job functions to better serve the departments and to better serve this community. So what we are doing, the court is remaining as it is, we're making no changes there. We made changes in that we brought the court administrator on last year or the year before, two years ago. So that somebody could oversee the day-to-day functions in the court office because I cannot. But then we're reforming the finance office to better fit what a finance office looks like in today's world. Specifically what that looks like right now, for example, this doesn't work on here. Angie Hellowell is our accounting technician and she covers everything, payroll, accounts payable, accounts receivable. She collects all of our money, she prints all of her checks that go out the door, there's a lot of functions that fall under her job description. And Lacy is primarily, is only utility billing. She only deals with stuff for utility billing. To modify that a little bit, what we're doing is, Lacy's position, we're requesting to move to an accounts receivable technician. So instead of just focusing on utility billing, money coming in, she's going to focus on funding coming in from around the city to do more kind of general account receivable stuff. Angie's position would lose the payroll component of their job, but pick up fixed assets so that we can do better internally about tracking our assets and getting our assets on the books. So accounts payable and fixed assets are kind of directly intertwined because as the one who cuts those checks, you see those fixed asset items. And you're readily, you're in a better place to be able to track those and make sure to follow. fixed asset items, um, and you're readily, you're, you're in a better place to be able to track those and make sure to follow up. So that is something over the last, uh, 10 years, this, the auditors have said we lack. Um, we don't have a lot of stuff in our ass, in our capital system that we're supposed to. Um, they have been trying to get us to a point where we start to include things like our water lines and the sewer lines. We just haven't gotten. So we're trying to make the changes now to do better in our office, honestly. Um, and then Cindy's role is being changed to more, instead of accounting supervisor, it's more of a financial services manager to encompass what she will be working on. Primarily, her, her position will do financial reporting. Um, we'll pick up some more audit reporting functions as well as reporting to departments and then also take up K. We've started making some of these changes internally where we can, where it fits job descriptions. Um, but Lacy's specifically is the one that's going to need, um, a reclassification of jobs because she isn't at this level right now. Um, Lacy and Angie will be at the same level if this chart is adopted. So that will be part of the budget process. Um, for my year in review, uh, just a few items to, to hit. Um, first off, the city revenue received, you can see that that is significantly higher than the prior year, almost a million dollars higher. Um, and over the three-year average is significantly higher. Um, the city has been, has done very well over the last three years. The economy certainly helps that. Property tax valuations certainly help that. Um, but we are in a good position, um, which makes me happy because it makes my job a lot easier. Um, however, with additional revenue comes additional expenses. You can see the, the correlation between those. And really what that means is we're not spending frivolously. What that means is we're doing more with the money that we have. Um, we're getting more projects done. We're getting more streets with, with some repairs done. We're getting, um, a new uh, plan. What is that? Development, not a development plan. Development code so that we can, so that we can do things well, so folks know what they can do in the city. Um, instead of trying to navigate through a maze that has been kind of pockpock together over time. So we're doing a lot of things with the dollars that we have currently. The cash on hand did go down, um, but again, not cause for concern right now. We still have over 12 and a half million dollars in our bank accounts. We paid 85 people. Um, the finance office, if you weren't aware, does process passports for folks. We're one of the only ones in this general area that does. The next closest one is in Albany. Um, and then we print our, um, accounts payable checks. Uh, as I said, I cover municipal court. What they did want me to highlight is the fact that yes, it says 14 trials, which makes it look like things are going down. It's not. This is COVID numbers, if you remember. So our trials are down because for a lot of the year, we weren't able to have them. So we anticipate that those will pick back up here in the next, what we, eight to 12 months. Um, but they did make more money this year than they have, so. Not sure what that's about. Um, utility billing, the only thing I want to highlight here is the asterisk on accounts turned off. This is a would-have-been figure. So because of COVID, we did not do turnoffs from April until October. Um, well, COVID ended wildfires. Um, we didn't practice shut off. So for those of you who are, were not aware, if a, uh, utility account, if a, if a property has not paid its bill in over 45 days, basically is what it amounts to, their account is shut off for non-payment. Um, it's something that the council did in 2017. They kind of refined those rules and said, um, if they haven't paid their bill, we need to shut their, their utility service. We only handle water and sewer, shut off sewer, but we can't shut off water, um, until those bills are paid. And they are required to pay their past due bill and their current bill in order to get it turned back on. So had COVID not been here, we would have turned off 1,005 accounts. Now, that may be higher slightly because it was COVID. So we may not have turned those off in general, but our three-year average is 700 accounts a year, um, get turned off. And those, those include, those may, that list may be duplicated. Um, and what I mean is somebody may get turned off in January and then get turned off again in March, uh, or probably April. And they haven't paid their bill because it just kind of disappeared. So 700 times we had to turn off water. Um, our year in review, we navigated the COVID-19 pandemic. There was a lot that we had to do as a city for tracking COVID-19 expenditures in order to get reimbursements. To date, we have received $275,000 from the state of Oregon for COVID-19-related purchases. Um, and we are anticipating another $53,000 in the next couple of months. So the city will have ultimately recouped a little north of $300,000 in, in funds that we spent on things such as equipment to make this room, um, better suited for public meetings with the live streaming, um, PPE, uh, we implemented the new financial transparency software that you saw earlier. Um, we modified revenue accounts in our general ledger so that we could better track department spending and department revenue generation. Um, previously, all the revenue lines were kind of lumped together in just one general, here's your revenue bucket. So we split those out to departments so that, um, citizens and yourselves can better see, here is Blair's department, here's what he spends in a year, but here's specifically what his department brings in in revenue. Um, we began investments beyond just what we get from interest earnings from our city bank accounts and the local government investment pool. Um, that started in late July. So that's a brand-new process for us and we're hoping that it will yield better interest than what we were seeing in our existing accounts. We moved to what they call a P-card system or a procurement card system to reduce the actual physical charges from credit card fees. Um, and we transitioned the city to remote opportunities for public meetings and work functions. This is kind of an IT thing, but because I kind of manage IT a little bit, I put that in here because it was a big thing for us and it took a lot of my time and effort this year, um, away from the finance folks. Some of our challenges briefly, um, we are a small finance office of 3.9 FTE and I say 3.9 because while I am technically their fourth full-time person, um, a point one uh, FTE of me is spent in municipal court. So 3.9 FTE in the finance office. Um, it's small and, and has created some challenges for us, especially with segregation duties and my ability to kind of focus on a bigger picture. Um, enterprise resource planning or our software, Springbrook is our financial system, general ledger, everything is in that. Um, we've been trying to review that. It's a clunky system. It's not based in the 21st century, but we use it because it's cheap. Um, so we need to, to kind of look into, is this the best option for us long-term? And we need to focus on capital assets and inventory, um, which is why we're doing some of the position changes in our office. Um, additional challenges for the year was, was tracking the, the COVID-19 impacts. Um, and it impacted our staff as well, um, as it did other parts of the city. Um, I don't remember what the accounts receivable adjustments was for. Never mind. Um, and then it going forward as far as an overall finance picture for the city, funding for capital needs is extremely limited. Greg will likely talk about that in his presentation when we talk about capital. Um, and long-term fund balance concerns do exist in my mind. They don't keep me up at night yet, um, but we do have things to consider as we go through the next probably two or three budgets. The housing market is certainly good right now, but we are starting to see signs of that slowing down. Um, overall sales are, are dropping, listing, listings, number of listings are dropping. Um, and usually what follows that is kind of a decline in overall household values, which impacts compression in this city. Um, and compression hits hard here in a hurry. Um, so that's, that's stuff that will eventually keep me up at night. Um, but I hope that we have adequate reserves and, and ability to mitigate. Lastly, what 2021 has in store for us, um, we'd like to expand the investment portfolio to maximize city interest revenues. We are currently in the process of a bond refunding, also known as refinancing our debt, um, to save 1.2 million dollars, um, of city funds through 2036. Um, and we're going to leverage some of that upfront, about 350,000 over the next three years to be able to do capital projects. And so we're, we're kind of re, re, we're deferring some of the principal payments in order to save some money here and now, so we can get done what we need to get done. Um, we are currently reviewing options for banking services, um, to see if we can find um, a vendor that maybe won't charge us as much as we pay. So right now we pay about $500 a month in what they call account assessment or account analysis fees. Um, and so we're looking for other options, um, always trying to find better low-cost options for the city. Um, we're going to shift our office duties to better fit the needs of the department as we discussed, and then this is a big one for me. We've got to find that funding for the waste fund. That's all for me.
Okay, you guys are 27 minutes and 24 seconds over with finance department. We're gonna have to make that up. Lucky for you, the library report will be very, very short.
Okay, yeah, you have a good time and we'll see you tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, real quick, anything real quick for, we haven't already talked about? Or discussed? Any questions on any of that?
Are you all good and sleepy now? It wasn't long time ago.
Excellent. All right. Jeff, you have next? Jeff has a special guest. So yet again, the police department making the rest of us look bad.
No, no.
No, no, our time.
I'm gonna have to fall, I, that took so long, I probably forgot what I was gonna talk about. I'm trying to refocus because I, I don't know what's happening right now.
Third and second, can I have that nationally?
Jeez.
That comment will be reflected in Jeff's paycheck.
If it gets too bad, Jeff, just let us know. We'll take care of it.
What's that?
If it gets too bad, just let us know. We'll take care of it.
We dive right in?
Oh, you're also, you're always a joy.
That's not making a bunch of money.
Okay, well, we'll dive right into it since we're so far behind. It's always terrible to follow, uh, well, either Brandon or Greg because as they're going through the presentation, most people are just skimming their phones and looking on Facebook. Well, I don't think it's anything personal, guys, but it's just what kind of happens. So, um, so yes, uh, I'm here to present, uh, our, um, information to you and I brought, uh, Ryan Cummings in. He's got a part of it as well. Um, and, and some of it, as we go through, you'll know why Ryan's here. Uh, Ryan's one of our sergeants and he's been, um, with our department for 18 years. That's a long time for somebody in a small department. And so, um, some of it, uh, he does provide a lot of, uh, expertise in certain areas. You see the videos, everybody likes the videos. Um, that is a direct result of, of Ryan, but he's not here to record everybody. Um, yes, so what's gonna happen? We're gonna try to cover a few things on what our department does. And there was a vast array and so I tried to whittle it down to something that's maybe you guys would be interested in. But with that, I want to kind of let everybody know, if you have questions on anything off-topic than what we're talking about, just ask. Because I don't have a, a problem going down any little rabbit holes and, and providing you the information that, that you guys want.
Just realize you go a minute over time and you're not gonna hear the end.
Well, this is time. I have no idea what timeframe is anymore.
You see that? You see the timer right there on the?
You get 60 total. You're already at two.
If you put interrupting, he can get through.
This is terrible. Exactly. Thank you, Counselor Travis. The peanut gallery over here. So really what I wanted to start with is really kind of, um, describe how and why we, we police and the way we do it. If you didn't notice, 2020 was really a brutal year, not just with, um, COVID, but on policing in general across our whole nation. And so, um, what I want to kind of focus on right now is how we have kind of sat ourselves apart and what we do and what we focus on. And so part of it, I'm gonna go back into history. In 1829, uh, Sir Robert Peel, he was the first commissioner of the London Metropolitan Police Department. And in 1829, he came up with nine principles, the Peel Principles. And those, honestly, I still follow those and most successful, uh, law enforcement agencies follow those nine principles. And if you look, there's actually, we have it printed out somewhere. There's somewhere, they did get it printed out correct. Peel's principles are, are right here. And there'll be like a second page in, in the little notes that are coming out.
I thought we were getting away with it. Get away from it.
That's Brandon. I'm, if I don't have paper, I'm in trouble. That might be my age too, so. That'll come into play a little bit here too. So really Peel's nine principles, if you read them, are as accurate and, um, common sense and commonplace today as they were in 1829. And if every law enforcement agency in the nation would follow these principles, we wouldn't be in the situation we are currently in with the, the negativity towards the police. Um, I focus on these principles and in essence, it creates a philosophy of, um, that the police have their powers through the common, um, the, the, uh, common will of the public. Police don't have the powers through the state. It's the public that gives the police the powers. And so each of these play a significant role in how we, we police. Um, in our department, we don't, we don't focus on policing people. We try to police problem. So one of our, our big approaches is trying to, years ago, probably when I first took over as chief, we really tried to start working towards a problem-oriented policing agency. Well, we're looking for solutions to find those problems. And, and it's, it's just much more of a service-based model. There's still a vast amount of police agencies out there that are, are policing people. And that is just a complete contradiction of, of Peel's principles. And that's why we're, we're here. There's still a lot of agencies that, um, they rate their officers, um, and encourage their officers. Uh, the number of, whether it's the number of sites, the number of arrests they make, um, that type of stuff where you're out trying to develop stats. Now, we still track those. There's no doubt about it. We still track them to, to see what, what's going on, but we're really tracking them to see how, um, how productive the officers are being. By productive is how active they're being out there and how engaged they are out there in the community. Um, so as we move towards our problem-oriented policing, you know, towards the end of it, we'll talk about four projects that, um, that we, we still work on. Some are long projects and some are very short. Some we've had a great success at, some we haven't had. And so we'll, we'll talk about those and the, the focus we're moving on in, uh, the next year. But that's really what the problem-oriented policing model is. Find, finding that there's a problem out there and then giving all the resources together, whether it's our own resources, other people's resources, and trying to find a solution to solve it so that it doesn't continue to occur. Um, now that's extremely effective and then when we combine that with, um, procedural justice, which is a, a big term in policing now, uh, procedural justice. It has really four tenants to it in the aspects. It is, and tell me if these are common sense and make, and, uh, we all should be doing. Free people what they didn't even respect. Yeah, you can't argue that one. Uh, give them a chance to be heard, convey trustworthy motives and make reasonable, informed and transparent decisions. That's procedural justice right there in a nutshell. And if we can combine problem-oriented policing and the procedural justice aspect of it, uh, you have a, a solid stellar, uh, police agency that is here for the community. It's here to provide a service, not, um, not just a, an enforcement arm of the government. And so that's what we, we try to do, strive to do it. Do we always get there? No. You know, unfortunately, policing is one of the aspects where You know, unfortunately, policing is one of the aspects where we don't necessarily get to choose who calls or why they're calling, and we end up going regardless of what the matter is. There's, I mentioned it before, there's a lot of times we'll go to a call, and everybody's unhappy after we leave. The person who called us, the other person that's involved in whatever conflict it is, and we leave, and everybody's dead. And so that's just the nature of policing. And it really is addressed in some of the principles, Peel's principles. I'm gonna read what I consider the most important ones. Number nine, the test of police efficiency is the absence of crime and disorder, not the visible evidence of police actions and dealing with it. Number two, the ability of police to perform their duties is dependent upon public approval of police actions. And the other one, number one, the basic mission for which the police exist is prevent crime and disorder. Not to arrest people. It's to help the community in times of need and provide that service. As we continue those two processes, we'll continue to be successful. And why I think we're successful right now is that in November, our levy went out for a vote, you know, and it returned, we got a 70, over 74% approval rate on that vote. I felt that was huge, and not just, well, think about 2020. Was there any good press on police in 2020? No, you can't really say there was a whole lot of good press for policing in the United States. COVID. Well, COVID had everybody locked up, and everybody's worried about financing, rightfully so. And at the same time, we have to go out and ask to renew our existence. So that 74% is huge. Five years ago, when we went out for the levy, it was at 50, 59%. So I think it's a substantial increase, and really, I credit it to our staff. The officers are going out there. I don't go out and make calls anymore, so I'm not the one that's directly out there in front of people. It's our staff that is. And this is still a people business, and we've got to find the staffing that will allow that, foster that. And that's really our whole approach, is to find those people.
Staff, are you still looking?
By God, look what we found out. Staff. Notice that transition? We've had some significant changeovers in staffing recently. So I've been here in the department 21 years, and I, you know, through that time, most of it I could point to one officer. This person's probably gonna move on this year or within next year. This last year, 2020, we had three employees that left that I would say unexpectedly. I assume they were gonna be there for significant periods, and whether it's through their personal life, changes in their circumstances, they all moved on. And so all of those employees, oh, well, two of the three were long-term employees that had been here in excess of 14 years. And so it left a void of knowledge in our department. But then if we looked at it from the whole totality of it, it also has created a lot of opportunities for us to grow. Because not all turnover is bad. People don't like to hear it, but we'll never keep all of our officers 25 years through their career. You know, unfortunately, we're a small agency, and small agencies, you know, they get cannibalized, if at all possible, by larger agencies. Other officers, you know, they'll be here a period of time, and then they, some don't get connected. You know, Ryan came from out of the area. He was not one of us. And, but he's staying. He's been here 18 years. His family's here. His kids are here. He's committed to the community. We're not fortunate enough to have that all the time. But we do offer some unique experiences for the officers. So as we've talked about our staffing, I'm gonna show you what we currently, how we're set up currently. Okay? This is our current model, and the employees that are here. Two years ago, we moved to a status of having, we went from two patrol sergeants to four patrol sergeants. We lacked a lot of supervision when it was just myself and two patrol sergeants. A lot of coverage that was just missed. And so came to the, like, came to Ray, we sat down, came up with a plan, and then through the budget committee process and council process, we were allowed to move to a four sergeant model, where there was one sergeant on every day and night shift. So every shift that we employed had a sergeant assigned to that. Since we've gone through our transition of, you know, losing and restaffing right now, it's brought us to a situation where I think we can improve on this. Because right now, if you look at this, I'll tell you right now, we're over sergeant, I don't know if that's a word, too many sergeants, and we have too little of investigative ability. And so that has become apparent to me, and this, with our turnover, gives us an opportunity to reposition some of our staffing, to make them, to make us more successful. So this is what I've proposed to Ray, and it hasn't been to council yet, this is the really first time he's put out. What it does, it puts something, somebody right under me that allows for another person to do that 30,000-foot overview and help us and guide where we need individuals, help us guide what projects we're working on. Because the projects are really time-intensive, and as we get into them, you'll see kind of what we're trying to do. We try to do a lot with not that big of an agency. And so I'm proposing that we have a captain, basically an assistant chief, whatever you want to call him, that oversees two detectives. So we've increased our investigative, we doubled, almost tripled our investigative capacity. And we still have the same officers on the road. We're just have two sergeants that are splitting theirs. In essence, it's relatively cost neutral. Sure, it's relatively cost neutral, because I'm getting rid of a sergeant and adding a regular officer and bumping one more up. You'll at least throw me bone after all that time.
It seems cost neutral.
Thank you. That's all I needed. And this, it gives us more opportunities to further serve the community. And so again, you'll see this in the future. You know, Ray hasn't shot it down.
You're talking good.
This is much more in line with what other agencies our size are doing as well. So it's not that I just picked this. We pulled all of the agencies that are roughly our size, plus or minus, and looked at how they're structured. Probably over half are structured this one. And so, you know, I think it's in the, it's in our future, it's in the community's best interest to really improve our investigative capacity. Unfortunately.
When you're done with this, can I reject you some more?
We would actually, to be honest with you, Ray, you'd prefer.
Yeah, absolutely. And so.
I like that.
Because unfortunately, violence is happening all around us, you know, and over, in 2019, we had homicide. 2020, we had the fire, where it was really, four people were of the murder-suicide. Tragic things that take a significant amount of our resources. And so this will allow to benefit that. And right now, with the one detective, we are doing a whole lot of drug investigations right now. That detective's too busy with child abuse investigations. You know, there's, you know, those come in on about a daily base, at least a concern over some type of abuse that's occurring, whether it's elderly or a child, whether that child is physical, mental, or sexual. And that takes up the detective's time on that. There's a lot of legwork that goes into those. The child abuse is always illegal. I know what you're talking about. The drug aspect, you're right. It's not necessarily illegal. But child abuse will always be, Counselor Travis, illegal. The, but you are correct. You know, there's still, we decriminalized possession amounts of controlled substances as of February 1st. That doesn't mean we stop investigating what's happening. And it does create some issues, you know, and we've had a number of trainings last month on how we're going, how we as an agency and law enforcement is going to navigate that, because it's not just as the job as usual. So, and Ray, do you have some comments on?
So 21 years with the force, with the City Hall Police Department.
Yeah.
How many years do you have left before you're eligible for retirement?
Just over three.
Succession planning, not that we're counting them down by any chance.
Yes.
But succession planning is a very important thing in order to ensure continuity in our operation. And the captain position will really allow us to do that. When we go to hire a captain, assuming Budget Committee and Council will approve that, we wouldn't be looking for a captain. We would be looking for Jeff's heir, his successors. I think that's really, really important for us to keep in mind, basically Jeff's old, and he's getting retired.
I'd like to say there's not a lot of truth in that, but there is. I feel it every day. But Ray's absolutely correct. I should have mentioned it. Succession planning is gonna be huge in the coming years. And there's gonna be two things you'll notice. There's gonna be two people that'll be in front of you more and more, because I want you, you guys, and Ray to get a feel for them. And those are the two that I think could be the successors of the future. One is Ryan Cummings, and the other is Jason Ogden. If Jason didn't work night shift last night, I would have had him here as well, presenting a portion of it, but it was unfair to get him out of bed, you know, he just went to bed. So you'll see more of them throughout the whole process, throughout the budgeting, in the coming years, to get a feel for him, for Ray to get a feel for him, and see if that is, could be a natural transition. I've always, I was, well, the former chief, Bob Burford, he was hired from within. He lasted 18 years. And I was hired from within. I love the idea of it, and I think we have some capacity to do that. Now we just gotta build on it and see if they're worth anything.
But Jeff, you're gonna cut your sergeants by two. And so one of the biggest concerns you had at that time was when we went with the four sergeants. So what are you gonna do for the people when that's, one of the sergeants is gone? You're only gonna have one sergeant left. Who's gonna fill that gap?
That would be myself, and the captain would fill that. And so whether, if they're gone for extended periods of time, you know, the captain would probably bump down into that patrol sergeant position for that period of time. If it's just over, not, you know, they're gone for a day or so, you know, both of us will just step in and fill that role. And we're already, I'm already currently doing that when a sergeant's gone for a period of time, stepping in and just filling the roles. We're too small of an agency not to kind of cover multiple things. I actually even go out and handle calls still. May not be the best, you know, but I still go out there. And so, yeah, so we're just too small not to cover that.
Is, so you're not just too small of an agency to have a lieutenant's position?
Well, you could call it either one. Okay. You mean, but what are you referring to?
Well, you could call captain, assistant chief, and then lieutenant, and then sergeant.
Yeah, I think we get too top-heavy again, and that's where I was concerned about with the four sergeants. You know, we're just top, even though they're working sergeants, but we just miss that, that person, that middle person that can help direct the sergeants as well as detectives and that. I think if we had two, added another layer, then I think we'd just be, again, my concern would be too top-heavy. Too many chiefs, not enough idiots.
Well, I agree with that. I was just thinking, in case you have a situation where, you know, hold it or whatever you have, you know, two gone, one quit or whatever, then you at least have that little bit. I see what your point is. You get too top-heavy, but maybe one of the technicians, lieutenant, something happened to the captain. You've got, you know, succession.
And that's really, and Ray's absolutely right, that succession planning is gonna, going to be big going forward. Because our agency right now is, we got a lot of old people, no offense, but a lot of people have been here a long time, and a lot of brand new ones. And so, you know, we've got to help navigate that and do exactly what you're saying, is just fill that.
But you had last year, too, last year you had a lieutenant in your budget. Is that not true?
No, no. What we had is, we had a free over the budget committee. We actually pulled one position out that had been funded in previous years, and we put it in a contingency line item, because none of us really knew how the budget was gonna progress. And then we didn't fill it because, well, COVID, you know, we just, everybody wanted to see what does, what do the finances look like? So that's kind of where we're at. So it was never in there. You know, I think about, it wasn't quite a year ago, we started talking with Ray about, this would be the ideal way to set up, in my opinion, set up the organization.
Over the course of the last year with COVID and school system, what has a school resource officer been doing? Have they been working on patrol and stuff?
They moved back to patrol full-time, and the school resources officer is, he's on night shift right now. And he has been since we really, we lost the individuals, you know, or we lost those people, so we had to backfill the road. Because road, obviously, the patrol officers are the backbone of any department. You know, you've got to have boots on the ground to go there and respond. So that takes priority over most other things. I actually just talked to the superintendent yesterday. He was asking about that, and I told him, we just don't have, I don't have the capacity right now to get a school resource on. So we came up with a plan on how we're gonna have some more presence over the schools at certain times, but it just won't be that designated officer. So it's been a struggle. It really was a while, and they wanted to do it anyway. So we filled this time up with important things. But as we, as we move on, so this is a proposal that the proposed staffing model. The next thing, and why Ryan's here, Ryan conducted our use of force review. Every year, at the year-end, we do a use of force review to see how we did, any trends that are out there, what training we might need, and what we can do better to help the officers out. Because if you look at Peel's principle number three, the core, the degree of cooperation of the public that can be secured diminishes proportionally to the necessity to use physical force, to the use of physical force. So as you use more and more force, the, you separate yourself from the public more and more. And so it's always something that we've taken seriously. Our policy indicates that we review our use of force. And so I'm gonna introduce the one and the only Ryan Cummings to really talk about that 2020. This isn't really the first time we've presented the use of force. I just think it makes sense right now in today's day and age that we can present some of that to you.
Well, thanks. Despite the introduction. So full transparency, I'm also a night shifter, and I was a little concerned when he started off back in the 1800s. But I'm still awake, so put this raw in this. It's actually a pretty old picture. So yeah, last month, he asked me to do a review of our use of force, an annual review. And so I just started off by looking at our numbers, looking at the global numbers for the department, total number of case numbers generated, total arrest cases, the cases that are marked A for arrest, and then cases that are marked with use of force. And when we do our reports, we have a drop-down box. Anything other than cooperative handcuffing, where we are pointing a taser or we're moving somebody's hand behind their back for them, so to speak, those are marked or should be marked use of force, and so that's looking for. And then after looking at sort of the global numbers, I went and crunched it by officer. So how many cases did each officer handle? How many arrests did each officer have? How many uses of force? And what I found was, our total number of cases as an agency last year, any kind of case, was 8,271, which was down about 4.2%. I'm sorry, I don't have PowerPoints. So, so down about 4.2% from 2019. And our total arrest cases was at 968, which was down about 6.2% from 2019. So again, total number of cases down to 4.2, total number of arrests down to 6.2%. And then I looked at the total number of uses of force, and that was down about 21.3% from 2019. So that's a significant drop. Now, I don't know exactly what contributed to that, because of course, 2020 was kind of an anomaly. A lot of things could be going on there, but, I mean, it's a drop in the numbers for use of force, which is great for us, and we're still accomplishing goals as an agency. Now, looking at the officers as individuals, I kind of took a look at the top end and the low end for those numbers of uses of force, and reviewed each, like, looking at cases, reviewing the reports, reviewing the videos, and just, so you're aware, what I found was no major issues, and most importantly, And, uh, just so you're aware, what I found was no major issues and most importantly, no excessive uses of force. Um, also it should be, uh, noted that I'm not aware of any citizen complaints throughout twenty twenty regarding the use of force. So I think we're kind of on track in that regard. Uh, and to my knowledge, we are meeting all the requirements that are set forth by Department of Public Safety Standards and Training, uh, regarding our training and how we're doing it and how we're forgetting these officers. So I think we're on point with that. Uh, that being said, I've spent a lot of time doing the defensive tactics training myself. And I can tell you that over time, we have been, uh, focused not only on the physical aspects of it, you know, the, the techniques that you use, but also the decision-making process. We do scenarios and, you know, help an officer learn, should they use force, should they not? And within that encounter, where does that go? Because it's not just a static thing. It, it, you may start off with something that looks like a lethal threat and they change their mind and then we have to change our tactics and it's always a, an ever-flowing thing. Um, so we do a lot of that when we train, mostly training the mind, still training the body too, but, um, that's, that's really the most important part of us. Um, now moving forward as supervisors, uh, I think we all are gonna continue doing our efforts, uh, regarding just making sure that those cases are marked when they need to be. Uh, sometimes it's easy to overlook, uh, something where an officer has more or less a, a decent peaceful encounter and they just kind of move their hands behind their back and they, and they handcuff them. There may be a static or there's a, they may forget to mark that box. And so as supervisors, for us to ensure quality assurance, look at those cases, make sure they're being marked, review the videos, make sure that we're doing things correctly, uh, correctly. Uh, and so that's what I think we'll continue to do. Um, and also we've got a new policy that's been, uh, handed down to us, uh, which I think is a state mandate, if I'm not mistaken. Things that we've already been doing for the most part anyway, but, uh, basically if there is reasonable amount of time, an officer is now required to, to advise that I'm going to use force against you or something similar. Uh, prior to doing so, as in I need you to comply, please don't do anything stupid. Uh, and I think that's a great, a great process. Uh, again, it's when, when it's reasonable to do. So it's not always, there's not always that amount of time. Uh, I think it could help our numbers in the future. Uh, of course, it, it does depend, I believe, a little bit on the state of mind of that individual. You know, they have to be at least somewhat rational to perceive telling them and, and, and adjusting accordingly. Um, but it's, it's a step in the right direction for sure. And then, uh, if available, we always encourage our officers to seek out de-escalation training and dealing with, um, people who are suffering from mental illness. I think that's unfortunate. A lot of what we deal with is somebody who's in crisis and we have to be able to uh, meet their needs and not, uh, not overdo it and, and still sort of accomplish the goals that the, the department needs to accomplish. But overall, I think we're on the right track and I don't have any major concerns. Um, that's pretty much all I've got for you. Um, have anything else?
No, really any questions on that one? My, you know, as far as why our numbers are, are down, I think you could make a, a case if COVID's played a little bit of role into that.
Sure.
Um, quite honestly, the jail won't take anybody to be arrested anyway. And so, um, we make, we make some decisions that we decide release people in the field more and more because when we do that, you know, especially when COVID was really raging, um, our officers didn't have to get, you know, real, real up, uh, close and snugly with somebody. Um, we could cite them in the field and min, uh, limit our, um, exposure to them, to them and to us. And so those decisions have been made. Uh, will that change in the future? Uh, aspects of it will, yeah. Uh, but right now, um, we have a lot more times that we're putting handcuffs and taking somebody to jail right now. Uh, and that, that honestly, that could be a, um, trend of the future. You know, Oregon's not one that really wants to pursue many criminal aspects anymore. So, um, we're adapting to that and um, really trying to understand our risk, the risk versus reward, you know? And so that's, that's what we, we spend a lot of time looking at. So, questions on the use of force or how we, you know?
I do have one. Seventy-four percent of being awarded from the levels.
Mm-hmm.
That's the question, the responses that they've gotten from us, not from us, from you guys.
The officers go out there, they do.
Would you mind telling the rest of the people? Because he won't.
Well, I, I would say that, uh,
I think, we, we, we're, we're very pleased for what's going on. At least I am.
I think that's kind of the general response that we've had from the public as well. And, uh, we are definitely, uh, we are very appreciative of the amount of support that we have in the community here. It's not that way everywhere, especially up in the north and bigger areas.
Yeah.
Um, it's noticeable here. We can, we can feel that as we're doing our job. So we, we hear that from the people and it is for sure. Yeah.
And some of that is directly related to how we try to connect with the community. Though all the, the whole video thing. And that was Ryan's idea and it was really designed to get our, our employees, all of us out in front of people. There might be a camera right now, but in front of a camera and to, to be able to connect that. Um, the bathroom door, it was lived here in town. So, you know, we're, we've lived here for long periods of time. That's just who we are. And so that was really, uh, kudos to Ryan for, for helping develop that and coming up with that so that, uh, people could put a face and a name and a, um, a personality with, uh, with officers and, uh, rest of our employees. Um, cause again, it's not all about enforcement. It's about services and it's about the, um, the problems that we could solve. Look at that transition to, come on. Oh, what happened? All right. Catalytic converters and theft. I mean, I know it's a hot topic. I thought it was pretty catchy to put catalytic converters on there right now because dear God, they're flying off the shelf for, for money. Um, hopefully we can put a little stop to that. But, um, one of the projects that we've worked on for several years are continuing to try to improve, um, our numbers associated with property crimes. We call it theft reduction. And also why Ryan's here, cause he was a big, um, it was a big factor. He was, he played a big role in designing our, um, response to that, uh, that reduction. One of his supervision classes, that was his project that he, he worked on. And we have seen some improvement in, in, uh, in our theft. Um, oops, what happened? One of, um, uh, you'll, you'll see the slide later. It's actually towards the end of the, the, um, uh, the presentation. But we've done a, a series of four things to help improve our, um, theft numbers. Um, one is, um, we've used much more of a data-driven approach to try to get people in places to be successful. Ryan, you wanna talk about that just for a second?
Uh, yeah. So we, uh, in, in one of the classes that I had, I did some research about what works primarily for, um, thefts from vehicles or stolen vehicles, that kind of a thing. Uh, and what I found was that there was a, uh, a nice program that was basically called hot, hot zone patrols or hotspot patrols. Uh, and so we do something like that now. We do zone patrols where we take our data as, as most recently as we can. And it's, you know, we're always seemingly one step behind. There's a little bit of luck to putting our people where, where they need to be to catch somebody, but, um, it can be geared a lot towards prevention, especially if there's one spot that's being hit over and over again. Um, and so we look at the data based on, um, property crimes, uh, all of them go from burglary theft, uh, vehicle theft, thefts from vehicles. Uh, and every week, if not more often, we'll do that and assign a zone. So we've got, uh, the, the area of the city mapped out in different little smaller quadrants, if you will, little sections. Um, and we'll assign a zone, have officers on night shift, especially going out there, uh, for ten to fifteen, maybe twenty minutes at a time at random intervals throughout the shift and just making a huge presence in that area. Um, hopefully, uh, the idea being stopping whatever's happening there from happening and/or, uh, picking up whoever's doing it if we can catch them. Uh, and that is, uh, I think at least a step in the right direction, uh, for where we want to be as opposed to just sort of, uh, it feels like this is happening. We're gonna be out there on a, on a sort of anecdotal basis. Uh, so we're trying to make the numbers drive where we're going. Uh, so far, you know, it's been decently received by the officer. They have, as you know, pushed back from it. They seem to be on board with it. As far as I can tell, it's, uh, hopefully helping.
Now, if we can combine those patrol zones is what, what we're trying to do with the, um, community involvement. Where you have, if, if, if the community is seeing something that's at a place, need to call. Cause so many times we'll have talked to somebody, yeah, well, I saw somebody look kind of odd, but I didn't call him because I didn't want to bother. You know, if we can drive that, that, um, that information home, they call us, bother us because that's really what we're, what the officers are out there doing specifically at night. If there's somebody suspicious, if you're, if you drive by somebody thinking, hmm, that's weird, you can always give us a call. There would be somebody in the area. That's huge, getting that, the community to commit to that. Um, combine that with community education. Let's lock our stuff up, people. It's not that hard. Very seldom are people actually shattering windows to grab something unless there's an iPad in there or something, a wallet or a purse sitting there. Um, they check doors and they'll go on from, uh, residence to residence, driveway to driveway, car to car, until they find, uh, cars unlocked. And you know what? It doesn't take them very long. And so if we could help continue that education of people, you know, take some steps. We can all say, yeah, you know, in the good old days, we didn't have to do that. Well, that's true, but today you have to do that. Um, and so really driving that home and Legia is helping us, you know, get out that information more and more to, to really get people to think that, that. Um, and then the final thing we're doing is hopefully next week, and I'll have to look at Legia some, is we're rolling out our surveillance system registry program for, um, community, for the community. What that is, is, uh, they, uh, the community can voluntarily, uh, enter their information and details about their, their surveillance system they have at their house. Um, it's not available to the, the public. The public can't access this website. But the officers, when they're out in the field and they're, they're on a theft call, they can pull out, pull out their, um, tablet that's in their cars. They can pull that up and it will show each house that has a, um, a video surveillance system that may be able to help them out in that investigation. So it's just another way of getting the community involved. Now, uh, you know, some people are concerned, well, they didn't, they don't please look me in the video. That's not it. We don't have access to the video. We just send the owners of that system an email that says, hey, you know, we had this happen in your neighborhood. Would you be willing to look at your cameras and see if you've seen anybody in this, this timeframe? Let us know. We'd love to, we'd love to see that footage. Um, it's just another way of getting the community involved. Uh, because it does take, uh, you know, it takes all of us to reduce the crime. And so, um, that in essence is our plan that we've been moving forward on. Our surveillance registry will be out within a couple of weeks. Um, it's already signed up. We're, that and we're just having to change some of the, the, um, Legia's looking at me like.
So why I came today?
Yeah. And so, and if it's not, if it's not out next week, it's purple. Anyway, so that, that's one of our, uh, projects. The next project, warrant reduction. Dear Lord. Warrant. Don't, don't leave. No, no. No, no. As you all know, just recently Brandon said he's responsible for municipal court. Well, we'll talk about some of the municipal court, all courts aren't very effective right now. I think that's the easiest word to say. We're not very effective. And why is that? Uh, well, let's look at it. These are the number of warrants that our Sweet Home Municipal Court, a community of just over nine thousand people are entering a year. In twenty twenty, the municipal court issued six hundred and seventy-three warrants for people's arrests. In twenty nineteen, it was seven hundred and ninety-three. The gap, I would say, is simply because of COVID and they only had a handful of court dates. Um, to me, those warrants are broken down into two different things. Failed to comply warrants, which means they haven't done something that the judge has ordered them to do, whether it's, uh, payments or maybe they haven't gotten to their diversion or gotten an assessment they were supposed to. Um, and then there's also the failed to appear warrants. Um, this isn't a, a, a problem unique to Sweet Home. It is, uh, it's throughout the state. Every, every one you talk to, especially associated with courts, is there's, they call it epidemic of, uh, failed to appear, failed to comply warrants. Now, how can we improve that? Because that's, we're entering normal years over almost eight hundred in the last the two prior years. That's a huge amount of time for court staff. It's a huge amount of time for our dispatchers to enter that. And it's a huge amount of time for officers, whether they're all local officers or throughout Oregon, to actually serve those, process those, and people still don't show up. Um, it's, it's a huge issue and it's a, it's a huge drain on resources. And so I've been, uh, looking for ways to try to improve that. Brandon and I sat down a couple of weeks ago and we talked about, we kind of broke it down, some of the failed to comply warrants. You know, if it's strictly a money issue, they haven't, they're not paying the court. My belief is let's just, let's cut bait on that and let's get them collections and just be done with it. Now, there's, this is all, a lot of these are decisions that the judge gets to make. Um, again, the, the judge works for you guys. Uh, and he's fantastic to work with and he'll be, he'll be more, more apt to, to help out with whatever he thinks, uh, we can do. Um, so Brandon and I have sat down, you know, we've done a lot of research. What are other people, other courts, other agencies doing throughout the nation that have shown some improvement? One is texting, where the court will text to, um, if you, if you're cited in the court, they'll send you three texts. So one is roughly a week before court starts. Week before your court date, you'll get a text on your phone. Two, the, the second one will come about three days before and the third one a day before. And so the, apparently texting from the, the research is far more effective than even phone calls. People don't necessarily answer the phone, but they'll respond to look at texts that they receive. Um, that comes at a cost. Um, and I think each text with the current program that's set, set up is a dollar a text.
A dollar for, per person for, so.
Oh, a dollar per, well, that's cheap right there. Look at that.
So that's, that's about a hundred and seventy dollars a court date and we do that twice a month.
Mm-hmm.
A hundred and forty dollars a month and times twelve.
So it's, um, we're definitely looking at ways to help reduce these number of warrants. Cause right now the, the court's on tech. If you don't show up, what happens to you? Nothing. We can't take you to jail. Cause jail doesn't take anybody right now. So, um, you know, we give them hugs like Oregon wants and we pat them and they, they, they head out. Um, that's where we're, that's where we're at. So let's find different ways that we can help alleviate some of these warrants. Um, with the texting, I'm looking at my time too. I got seventeen minutes. Um, also additional.
Ruth got it set there too.
Who, what?
Question and answer has to fit my time too.
And library. Jesus. We're also gonna be, uh, developing some additional paperwork. If you look at a citation, those of you who've gotten citations recently, I don't know. You look on the bottom of it is the very smallest print and usually that you can't hardly read is the court date and the court time and court location. Um, we can't necessarily change the requirement of the ORS for that citation, but we can give out another piece of paper that is prominently displayed on top, your court date and your court time. This is what you're cited for. This is where you're going. And so will it be effective? I don't know. It's worth a try because, um, why not? And so the, uh, we're gonna follow that up with, uh, trying to reduce some time between court appearances. So if an officer, uh, charges somebody, uh, rather than have, uh, four to five weeks for the court date to get set out, can we do that in two to three weeks? Can we go to, you know, the next or the very next court date just so less time to forget? Um, and then the other thing that's, is to talk about is is our, is our court system flawed? Are, is our court and the access to court, is it, I hate to say inconvenient, because if you got something, you should show up for it. But are we not providing access to the court for those individuals that, that have a hard time getting there? Does that be, we have additional court dates or the different dates of the week? Are there different programs that we look at? I know where there's been some amnesty programs at the court instead of in the past. Um, the, how can we better help people access our court system? Uh, that's another one. We don't quite have answers for that. Uh, we're really gonna start down these, these other three, the three, uh, check off these three boxes. See kind of what the, um, results are and go from there, you know? The point of it is, we're trying something. We don't just, on my board, there's, um, written at the very top, it's question or process. Because I think that's huge. We all get in the run of, well, we've always done it. Just write them a ticket. They won't show up, but that doesn't matter. How can we do it better? You know? And then right below that is, uh, find solutions and solve problems. And so that's really how we function. Will we be effective at this? I don't know. I'm not gonna tell you yet. What's Brandon?
I don't want to take too much of your time away from you, but I, I do want to add the, you know, to there is a component for which the state of Oregon doesn't help with any of this either. So, you know, there's, there used to be some teeth to certain things that, that, like, for example, the court used to be able to, um, suspend licenses in order to, to, to enable folks to go, um, accomplish either their diversion classes or, um, to, to pay their fines or, you know, to get through the court process. Um, and then time after time, a lot of those, a lot of the teeth for the municipal court system and for the court system in Oregon generally has just been stripped away. So it does make things a lot more complicated, um, just because there isn't, there's a saying of don't, don't do the crime if you can't do the time or whatever. There's, there's nothing, there's no, there's no penalty for some folks. And so it, it really complicates what we can and cannot do.
And we are actually looking at it. I'm glad you, you brought that point out. I've been talking with, uh, I've been talking with Lebanon Police Department, you know, will they rent our municipal court bed space in their jail for, I don't know? And so they didn't say absolutely no. But again, there's a cost associated with that, and I think that would be something used for just the the ones who really upset the judge for whatever reason. And but it would allow some teeth for some different people at some different times. So so that's another thing that we've had some discussions on. They won't go away, and the circuit court battles the same thing. So it's one of the one of the hurdles we're we're facing. One of the other projects that we try to focus on is traffic. I'll be, quite honestly, we failed at really addressing this. We haven't moved the needle on this project at all the shit. Now, I can, I can blame staffing, because we're short, it's hard to get people out there. But we haven't done enough to improve the perception of traffic in our downtown corridor. You know, we have some great plans in place. Those plans include ODOT. ODOT for about, I don't know, how long, Greg, a long time. We're getting close. We're getting close to for some speed monitoring signs, you know, to where we can really pull some data from those signs and know where the problem areas are, so we can focus our finite resources to those problems. If we only have an officer on, let's let's tackle this area at this time, try to make the most impact we can. We haven't been doing that. And so we've been trying to assign officers when we have additional on that can just focus on traffic in the downtown area. Over the last couple of days, significant number of traffic stops in the downtown area and on Main Street, because we had those people on that were were stepping stepping up and able to provide that time and that that visibility down there. Our whole hope has been to use a data-driven approach. We just haven't done it yet. So in 2021, we will be moving the needle on traffic, you know, we're going to be upsetting a lot of people, but we'll move the needle on traffic, because I think there's two things we have to consider with traffic. And for those who are familiar with First Avenue, with the issues we used to have on First Avenue, or still do to some point, there's two drivers and concerns over traffic. One is the speed, you know, the the speed of vehicles in there. And that can be either actual speed or perceived speed. But the other one is volume. You know, we dealt with this on First Avenue for quite a, quite a while. If you drive our downtown area, there's a significant number of vehicles compared to, update myself, 15 years ago. And I, you know, it's it's to the point where I choose where I want to enter onto or on Main Street, because I don't want to be at necessarily 13th Avenue and trying to get on the Main Street if I'm trying to cut across, because there's a huge amount of traffic. So we've got to find ways to tackle both of those, the perceived, the people to see all these cars, assuming we have a traffic problem, and the speed. And that's what the data-driven approach will really get us to. But we're going to actively control them. So you'll see throughout 2021, a much more committed effort for us to be visible in the downtown area to really to fix that. Two things people complain to me about, and regardless, one, homelessness, which may just happen to me the next life. Two is traffic, traffic concerns. Now, I'll be honest, we've said it to people in our own staff. I told Ryan this, if people are complaining, and that's the worst they got, and there's some traffic issues in town, that's pretty dang good. If you break it down into a nutshell, that's pretty darn good. But we can get better at that. And so 2021, you'll see a much more concerted effort to improve that in our downtown area. And speaking of, but you can see these, there's a chart in there, just our our numbers are down across the board, you know, with our traffic stops, our traffic sites. And so we're going to work towards improving that this year. The second question I get the most of, and Counselor Gordley would know as well, and Counselor Mahler, and everybody is homelessness. We submit or we commit a lot of time to trying to move the needle on this. Have we moved the needle? Some will say yes, and I will say, with a mixed bag like that. You know, what we've got going on down there was a failed experiment. And we don't, you know, we can all point to it and say, well, you know, my mind was in a different place, and I thought for sure we had somebody there that could could help run this effectively. That didn't happen. And it's a train wreck down there, and while we're down there, I'm referring to the Nazarene Church across from Kirkway, where the homeless camp is. As of yesterday, there are 12 individuals still at the camp, so the number has gone down. But at some point, I think the homelessness, we're really going to have to sit down and have a a serious conversation about, in some type of work session, on homelessness. Because with the state of Oregon, it's not getting any easier for us to even come up with solutions for it. I've included in your your packet, House Bill 3115, that's a proposed House Bill. It takes some of our hurdles, and in my opinion, makes them worse. Robert and I were talking about it yesterday. Some of our hurdles to deal with homelessness were the the Boise ruling and the Grants Pass ruling, which were federal court rulings that really hampered and limit what we can actually enforce in our ordinances and where where individuals who are experiencing homelessness can can camp and sleep at night. House Bill 3115, and Robert and I debated this. I think that takes it to another level. It went to where they would be allowed to put up what is necessary for for to keep themselves, they'd be able to throw tents up in safety park regardless. And officers, cities, we will be able to do very little about it at night. Now, during the daytime, I still think we could say, you know, it's time to move along. But 3115, I'm concerned about. And so couple that with Boise and Grants Pass, and we really can come up with some plans on how we're going to move forward. There's a lot, we've all touched on the topic a little bit, and we won't dive into it, because this homelessness could be a half a day discussion right now, because it is a very divisive issue. You've got people on both sides. What we're doing right now, is this right now, isn't good enough. What it's going to look like in the future, I think we're in kind of a transition period that we've got to come up with something, and we've got to provide some answers. And I, you know, again, at some point, I really believe we all need to sit down and get some of the other stakeholders and figure out what we want this to look like, because it's not going away. And our ability, law enforcement's ability to to control where homeless people are is diminished and almost to the non-existent, unless it's private property, it's always different, but I'm talking about public property, public spaces. Our hands are tied. And so we, that's just some, that's coming down, and this is the House Bill's concern. But we won't tackle that too much. See. There we go. Some of our stats, I just threw these in there. Property crimes is what we talked about earlier that I thought the the slide was up there. You can see, we're just slightly above last year. But compared to the previous years, we were doing, doing very well compared to historical data. Our property crimes crimes clearance rates are at 30, I think last year were 32%. My goal, and one of our KPIs, our key performance indicators, was to have that at 35%. Now, we're below that. I will say, national average, the, it's in the the high 20%. So we're still above national average. We still have some work to do to to really get to the 35% where I'd like to see our department. And person crimes, they're, they remain relatively stable. And we're at, another key performance indicator is the clearance rates on person crimes, and we're at 70, 74% clearance rate, and our goal was 65. So we're doing very well on that. And we get, have improvement to do, like we talked about in our property, property crimes. One more, Brandon? And then the last couple of stats, if you just, dog calls, every officer despises dog calls. We didn't sign up, you know, dog control officers, but we do that a lot. And you can just see the number of calls that that kind of come in. We have to do a better job. Honestly, we have to cite more people who their dogs are running loose, and officers don't like doing that because of that that whole service model. The final one is just discussion. You guys have about four minutes, three minutes, 10 seconds to ask anything you want.
So Jeff, I have a question.
Yes.
On the warrants, have we, has there been discussion on work crews where people could actually work off their warrants? Or their fines or whatever?
In the, in the past, there has been. We haven't really gone down that road. You know, Lynn County historically has offered a work crew option for people that even our municipal court clients could take, could get involved with. But I don't believe that's very effective, because they have to actually typically travel to Albany to get onto the work, work crew ban. And so that's, again, we're not really saving anything. I think that it could be a great idea. What that costs is Brandon money, because that's for, I don't think that's police, that's for police problem, I don't know. It would cost money to have somebody manage it and and supervise that. Not saying it's a bad idea. I think it would have a lot of benefit for for the court and the community. Get some free labor out of it.
And if I can expand a little, we've, Greg and I have had some initial conversations, very, very brief conversations about what that could look like from a city standpoint, you know, instead of some of the lower the 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 lower importance crimes, I guess I'll call them. You know, maybe could we have something where they're doing a work crew on a park day or something like that? But just, we don't have the staffing capacity to be able to maintain something like that. And so again, Jeff said, boils down to costs, to set something we want to occur.
It could be a very valuable program, not gonna.
Are they giving that to us, a fine or new service?
I'll leave that to you, but I believe so.
We can certainly dig deeper into it. I can, you know, part of the budget proposal could include something that would allow us to to do something like that.
And I think we could roll it out easier on those, the real low level. The low level crimes that somebody is charged with. Not not necessarily a person crime, or we have to worry about anybody, but those low levels, maybe we could. But I, Diane and I haven't looked into it a huge amount. Couple of years ago, we discussed it.
Okay.
I'd like to point out, it is one minute and one second under my time. Thanks, Brandon, for. But if there's ever any questions, feel free to get ahold of us. Any one of us will will answer whatever question. I think the point takeaway is we're trying to be adaptive to our new surroundings and our environment. And it's not always easy. Our hands are tied in a lot of things. And we're responding to a significant number of calls that historically shouldn't even be police-related. Mental health calls, we're going through them all the time, significant numbers. And you'll see those in the stats, the COVID stats that I presented. That's, most of the time, that's not necessarily a police call, and but yet we're the only ones that respond. And so it's it's a challenging environment, but it also provides a lot of opportunities for us. Do you ever have questions? Get ahold of us.
That was impressive.
If you're only one to set time, you can.
I will give you props for that.
So tab number eight in your binder is the library statistical report. Rose did help put this together before she retired, so we're appreciative of that. What you will see in this is it was pretty much mandated, the library to shut down for a period of time, so the doors were completely closed. This was a complete anomaly of a year for the library. That being said, they worked really hard. We were the first library to offer curbside service in this area. We still provide services and and continue to provide services in limited capacity that other communities were not doing. We were providing curbside when nobody else was providing curbside for extended periods of time. So we've worked really hard to continue to make the library available to people as much as possible through COVID, but the reality is, the size of that building, the nature of of that service. Remember, at the beginning, COVID could live for days on any surface. And that included books. So books came in, they had to be wiped down. And then the books had to sit initially, I think they sat for seven days before they could be recirculated. I think that is now down to about three days. But still, every book that comes in is sanitized by hand by one of our staff members and then left to sit for three days before it's put back into circulation. So COVID wreaked havoc on the services of the library and was able to to do completely cutout programs. Summer reading was just non-existent. I mean, we started doing some programs. You can see that's just significantly less than than what it originally was. Circulation numbers are way, way down. Public computer use is is way, way down. Prints are way down. People were still pretty active with Lynda.com, though, which, if you're not familiar, was a service which is actually now through Indeed. Educational program. You can go in and learn how to use Microsoft Excel or Microsoft Office or whatnot. And if you have a Sweet Home Library card, you can do that for free. Volunteers, eight. That's way down. Volunteer hours, way down. Summer reading, of course, way, way down. Revenue sharing, resource sharing, again. So we're part of the Lynn Libraries Consortium. And so basically, every library in Lynn County is all in the same computer system and utilizes the same program. And you can get any item from any library within Lynn County. So like Albany is a huge player, not because they have, you know, such a larger collection. So there's a courier service that includes Lynn Benton Community College. They're also part of the consortium. And you can see, 2019, being able to share those resources saved us $35,000. Obviously, this year, that's just not as much. How many people were served, again, significantly lower than than what we're used to. So we're hopeful the library is back open. It's limited to a maximum of 10 people. Something else to consider is the demographics of our community and the demographics of the people who utilize the library tend to be, probably carry AARP cards might be a way to put it, tend to be senior citizens or young, young families. Of course, senior citizens having to be extremely careful, more careful about COVID, and so they're choosing to stay away from the library. And then, of course, young families as well, just not coming in. So that being said, moving forward, we're having, we don't have a library. Rose retired. Joy and I met with two members of the State Library and went through the job description, the pay rate, whatnot. They gave us some input on some things we can tweak so that we can maximize our recruitment pool. And it was also very promising. They shared with us that right now should be a great time with what we have, what we offer, the pay rate. They believe we should have a really good pool of candidates when we get that out. And that's actually our priority number one after we got through this weekend, is to, is to start doing that. They're going to help us post it in all the right places. And they've offered to help with the actual recruitment process moving forward, sitting in on, even helping us develop questions and sitting in even potentially on interview panels if we ask them to. So ironically, one of the people, high-ranking members, and I don't know the title, I apologize, of for the State Librarians Office, is a gentleman by the name of Buzzy. Buzzy used to have a PE teacher by the name of Mr. Kissner. So Buzzy and Joy had a little bit of a history together and which was kind of fun to talk about with you. And Buzzy is the one who's going to, who's offered to be of great help to himself. We'll continue to do that. So we'll get that out. We'll probably leave it open for about a month so we can make sure we garner a really good candidate, a pool of candidates. And then we'll follow the same path that we followed as I hired other department heads. We'll have two panels. We'll have a panel that talks about culture. We'll have a panel that talks about specifics to the position. So coaching, I would call them a technical panel and a tactical panel. And then we'll have, those will include community members, will certainly include the library board. Kevin Hill will be a part of that. Members of the staff will be part of that. Historically, I've had a council member on each panel as well. Let's see what comes out. That being said, and I'll talk about this a little bit more during my presentation for administration. I'm not hiring just a librarian. Okay? I'm hiring someone who can lead the city of Sweet Home. And we've done that with Greg. We've done that with Blair. We've done that with Brandon. Uh, I don't hire people to just oversee their department. I hire people who are going to lead the city of Sweet Home. That's day number one on my list. Uh, I want people who are going to help take Sweet Home and make Sweet Home better. Not worry just about their department, but worry more about the city as a whole. Uh, so that's the first thing that I'm going to look for. Librarian and, and library skills will certainly be a close second. I always look to hire my replacement. That's what it comes down to. So the person I hire is someone who, at least out of that pool of candidates, will be the person who I think could, uh, potentially be the next city manager for Sweet Home. Uh, any questions about the library? Perfect. We're back on schedule. You want some, Brandon?
Ouch. I'm gonna feel this all day until I get to Greg.
Probably into tomorrow as well. So, um,
I don't think it'll matter.
So any, any questions moving forward right now? Any thoughts? We're talking about the library. Obviously we had, um, uh, how do we put this? Some friction regarding the library a month or two ago. Does anybody want to have questions on that? Want to talk about that?
Only in that, uh, Wes brought up yesterday, you know, you're gonna have something that's conflict to over communicate. So I think if we know that something like that's gonna come down again, we need to, as a city, over communicate before other people choose to communicate their narrative. So just, that's my thoughts.
I agree.
Well, two things here. One is, uh, council is totally correct. Second part is, is getting back to liaison council. Being part of the library board. That's gonna be helped a lot.
So we have a discussion later on committees. And right now, we generally, we have a liaison to all of our committees from the council, uh, except for the planning commission, um, and the library board. And, uh, the mayor and I have talked and I actually have talked with Kevin, the library board chair. Everyone's in agreement that that's something we should consider and probably before.
I guess when you're talking about, just real quick, when you're talking about planning commission, yeah, you recommend having liaison with library and so forth. The only thing that I've always felt through experience is you don't have liaison on the planning commission. And as councils, you try to steer away from going to a planning commission. And the reason for is if something goes south, or there's an appeal or something, then you set yourself up when it comes back to the council the end of the day, there's a problem. You were at that, if you were at the planning commission, it's gonna, you're gonna have conflict. And you've had members of the community that's intentionally trying to get counselors to attend the planning commission for that very reason. Say no, it's gonna come back and
I did that once.
Yeah.
And, and it happened. They asked me what I thought. And I'm thinking, oh, this can't be more terrible. So I had never been there.
I did once. I wanted to see what they were doing and how they did it. That's all. But I had to ask by citizen being there. I think that's okay. You know, there's no conflict going on, just observe. They not attended. So if, if we're really talking about long-term investing in a new library because of the issues with the current network, didn't we kind of lay that foundation down? The public had been aware when we did the levy, the long-term, we're looking at replacing the library, that conflict would never arose.
You know, yes and no. Yes, absolutely. You're, you're correct. There are many lessons learned through that process, uh, that I learned certainly. Uh, and well, hopefully be mindful of in the future. Prayerfully, we'll have to face that situation. Hopefully we don't have another worldwide plague going on in, in our lifetime. But yeah, so I will tell you, we advertised the crap out of those three public input processes for the library. And we didn't get any kind of feedback. We got nobody to attend. I would, I know I went to one and there was three people there. And that was, we held it at the senior center, um, right after one of their lunches. Uh, it was me and three other people and Rose and the architects. They did one for teens at the library and there are a handful of people there. And then they did one in the evening, open to the public. Uh, and I don't know, I think there were three, four, and I was there for that, five people there for that. So we, we did just meet with the architects. Rose and I, um, met with them last week, uh, via online teams. Uh, we're gonna start kicking that process off. And, uh, you're, we're gonna have an internal meeting to talk about funding and some other options. Uh, Rose and Dr. Horton actually did a little, uh, field trip and looked at some libraries. And there's actually some multipurpose facilities. It could be very beneficial and help meet some of the needs of our community. Uh, one, they could be long-term revenue producers, uh, while also being in need of, of our community for low income housing. To create, aimed at senior citizens. So, um, we're gonna morph all of that. We're gonna, we're gonna work with Brandon to talk about finances and how that might look and what all the options are. And once we have an internal, um, a bucket of information to share with the council, we're gonna have a workshop with the council. Talk about these different options, ask which option you want us to pursue and then begin moving down that road. So, yeah, it was, um, I'm not sure how some of that information got spread out there. Uh, literally I was accused of trying to close the library, which I can't do. I don't have such authority to do that. Um, and then I didn't, didn't like the library for some reason. And then when I responded in emails, and I think I CC'd you on most of them, um, the responses I got back there, oh, okay. So I, I, I'm not exactly sure how some of that story got told, but obviously that wasn't the case. And again, we were the only library that didn't lay our part-time staff off way back in March. We kept him, we kept him working and we could do that. And this is a unique situation where the, um, uh, beyond levy was beneficial, uh, for the library because we pretty much had, by the time COVID really hit, we pretty much had the lion's share of the revenue already in, uh, for property taxes the previous year. However, when we hit July, when we started that new year, revenues were down for four and a half straight months. And then in November, of course, they really tanked for those first couple of weeks. I panicked a little bit, uh, gave them notice of, hey, in 28 days, if things don't pick up, we're gonna have to look at some different options. Luckily, things picked up and we didn't have to, we didn't have to do anything. So, as we start seeing numbers increase, uh, which we're hopeful as the economy opens back up, particularly our seniors are, are able to get, get vaccinations. We anticipate we'll start seeing more people at the library and then we'll start increasing the hours again, uh, uh, to try to make sure we meet that demand. What I will share with you is if you recall, we increased library hours two years ago. What we didn't see was an increase in users with that additional time. Actually, we saw a decrease in users, uh, at least in checkups when we increased that time. Uh, so more hours does not correlate to more usage necessarily. That being said, we want to be available at times that most people can utilize the facility. So, uh, we're trying to do that now. There's some hamperings because staff have childcare issues, childcare needs. They have school-aged children. So we've adjusted our hours so that we can both, uh, allow our team to, to be home and do the things they need to do as parents, uh, and also be available to the public at the same time. So we'll look down some.
I think part of the problem with changing the library hours, like expanding them back down, is public isn't paying attention. And when they're heads, it's like, I don't know when the library is open because they're closed all the time. And so maybe like we have out here, our reader board, when we get in the library, have something there that's out there and bright with their hours or some of the services that they provide, you know, to, to do that visual community PR, because not everybody needs a new era, you know? Not everybody's coming to our sites to look at stuff. And those are the people that need to be in the library the most. So.
So when we get to that point, uh, and we start talking hardware design, science and stuff like that, obviously we'll come to you. I don't really matter. How much do we want to pay the, so what we want to do? Yep. Okay. Uh, any other questions? So lunch is ready. If you want to grab lunch, um, in this door again and probably out the other door. And, uh, we'll take a break. Uh, I'm gonna give you a, let's just check back in like 45 minutes. I'll give you time to eat, make phone calls, um, checking with family, those kinds of things. So Diane, can we be back about 12:45?
Yes, I will be.
Okay.
Oh, the next question is, um, those of us who had pictures last year, do we have, do we think this year will be for those of you?
You are more than welcome to forego them if you're pleased with your picture. The one thing I do want to do also, and, and today may not be that time, uh, is get a group photo of all of us for the website as well. We have all the individuals, but it'd be nice to maybe put you in front of the, we have a beautiful city hall now. Let's put you in front of this beautiful backdrop that indicates Sweet Home and get a nice group picture of you, if that's possible. So one of these nights for me and looking all, wear our Sunday vests and. Thank you. Dave didn't even wait. Dave just left. He was hungry.
Sorry.
In return, if you did your one, you could be friends today, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Hello.
I did the same.
Disney characters from in show art.
So I think these are hair players, hair player.
This is what you told me you did yesterday.
I'm trying. But you have to usually have a special picture. It has air. Air spring. Yeah. Huge touch ID. I guess I knew.
It's not legal to skip.
Nobody heard that.
I did, unfortunately.
Wait, was that on the recording? Well, step.
Yeah, thank you, Julie, for putting all that together, cooking and sleeping all night last night over the hot grill. I think we'll leave some of it out there if you want to jump out, grab some more, feel free. Rumor has it there's a pie and some ice cream left. Any questions on anything that we talked about this morning? Excellent. With that, I'm going to hand it off to Blair. Let him start his presentation. There we go.
Time is on.
Oh, shoot. The pressure.
Okay, Community Economic Development Department is probably the most variety, I think, of activities. We'll start with just a little introduction and we'll go into the structure of the department, our 2020 statistical report, talk about our current monthly performance measures that you get every month, our department goals, and then current operations and challenges for each part of the department. And then we'll finish up talking about economic development philosophy. So I was told to do an introduction. I don't think anybody else did it, but I've been with the city for about a year and a half. My wife and I moved here and my wife and our daughter Eleanor, Henry, and Grace. I was born in DC, grew up in Maryland, and then have lived substantial periods of my life in Utah, Arizona, Florida, and here. Previously, I was a city manager of the city of Stanfield, which is a tiny town over by Kermitson in northeast Oregon. Was there for six years. For that, I was in Florida as a budget analyst in Broward County. I've got a JD and MPA from Brigham Young University, and that's where I did my undergrad as well. So that's me in a nutshell. My wife is running the business. She's a registered dietitian and certified diabetes educator. So if you need to know what to eat, she can tell you. So on to KED. This is our department structure. This is why I said that ours is actually smaller because we have five FTE total, including me and the department. I'm the director. We have a couple of contracts. Northwest Code Professionals does our building official and inspection duties. We have a planning contract with Cascade West Council of Governments. Angela Clegg is our associate planner, and she supervises Molly Laycock, our building permit technician. Joe Grable is our staff engineer, and Ethan Rowe is our code enforcement officer. He's been with the city for six months now. So he's pretty much got his feet under Ethan now. All right. These are our numbers for 2020. Code enforcement was down in cleared cases, mostly because of COVID. Our previous code enforcement officer, Tommy Mull, was also our emergency management person. And so when the pandemic started, he pretty much dropped code enforcement for the most part for a little while and focused strictly on their emergency management portion. And that kind of affected our numbers significantly for the rest of the year. But a lot of things are not that different from previous years. The most common issue we have is tall grass weeds. The most time consuming and frustrating issue is occupied arid. In planning, we're pretty solid, pretty similar to previous years. Forty-four planning actions across seven different categories. We typically have around 11 planning permission meetings. The most common is a property line adjustment is your basics. Building permits, we actually were down from 2019, even though during the pandemic, building activity still kept going, but a lot of the smaller permits when it comes to like your mechanical building activity still kept going, but a lot of the smaller permits when it comes to like your mechanical stuff and you know, if you're redoing your, doing some sort of remodeling, a lot of those things have declined, but a lot of, there's still quite a bit of building activity going on. And so you see there has been a decrease in in the amount of fees that we've collected and evaluation of those jobs. The great thing about the way we're structured is that our usage of our building, our building inspection contract, that is the main driver of costs for for building activity. And so that, when we have a decrease in building activity, we just decrease our usage. We don't suddenly have to lay people off because of building activity fluctuating. Engineering, 105 public right-of-way permits, that's actually up from last year. And then a decrease in system development connections, down 28, down from 35. In parks, meetings about the same, special offense was down mainly because of COVID. The stuff that we've been able to do during the pandemic is actually pretty impressive considering all the, all the restrictions that we've had. And then we've, we're still cranking away at Sankey Park, getting that. In economic developments, seed projects is up this year from from last year. And then the number of entrepreneurs that have been assisted by rain is also up. So that's good sign. Right. Every month in my, in my monthly report, we have a number of performance measures that the various parts of our department report. This is just a basically copied straight over from the report that's in your packet for Tuesday's meeting. And just to explain a little bit about what you're, what you see every month. We have a number of permit categories. They, depending on what somebody wants to do with their building or their land, these, they're going to go in one of these categories. They're mostly self-explanatory residential, one and two family dwellings, that's, you know, houses and duplexes. Manufactured dwellings is on there. Demolition is removal of a house. Mechanical permits are things like your HVAC upgrades or replacements or something like that. You don't need a mechanical permit for. And then structural is is actual walls and things like that. There are different categories for commercial as opposed to residential. And so we report those as well. Just to keep you apprised of what's going on. Typically, we have a lot less commercial activity than we do residential. And that's, that's just the part of the course for just about every city. And then we report the total number of permits. The value estimate of all permits, the way the state does building permits is that you're typically charged based on what the, there's a bunch of tables that are adopted at the state level of what, what your job is considered valued at. And so that'll be what your fee is based on. So we, we keep track of that because that kind of gives you an idea of generally the building activity going on in town. And then the fees collected is our, you know, the portion that that we take in from that. Any questions on building permits? All that's operating. Okay, on to planning. Planning activity, when you compare it to building activity, looks really, tends to look really slow. And that's just because there's, there's fewer, the fewer actions that happen. If you're going to build a house, for example, and you have a lot that you've already purchased and it's in the residential zone, it's a permitted use. So there's no need for a planning permit. You're going to go straight to building activity. So most of the activity we have are just straight up permitted uses. And so there's not a planning component to it. When somebody wants to change something though, or do something that isn't contemplated by our code, then that's going to require some sort of planning permit. Whether that's a conditional use or partition or property line adjustment, or if something is as big as a subdivision. Those are, this is how we track those things. And so as you can see here, we're, you know, 2020 was above average, actually, you take in the last five years. We have seen kind of an increase in planning activity in the last few years. A lot of that is is due to more subdivisions being applied for more, essentially it's driven by the housing market. People want to be able to configure their properties to get the most, the most housing units in and so forth. A lot of times that'll require some sort of permit because, and then just to go into a little bit of land use 101. The comprehensive plan is what governs everything that we do. It's like the constitution for for land use in our city. And that's where the public has weighed in and say, it said, this is the density, these are the types of uses we want in these areas of the city. This is commercial, this is industrial, this is residential, and it specifies density of the residential. And then our development code is based on that. Well, when you get a designation for your property, you have a right to that designation. Even if the comprehensive plan changes later, you still are grandfathered into that designation. And so when a comprehensive plan changes and suddenly there's a different designation, maybe you used to have it residential and now it's commercial, or it was commercial and now it's residential, you still have the right to that previous zoning. And so the comprehensive plan doesn't automatically change that for your property. And so that's why we see zone change requests because somebody new will buy a property and see that it's, it's currently zone commercial, but the comprehensive plan has it high density residential. And they think, well, I can make a lot more money in high density residential because commercial activity doesn't really, is going down these days with Amazon and all sorts of lots of reasons for that. And so they'll want to change that in their zoning to that. Well, in this, in the most cases where we have those changes, the comprehensive plan already said that's what it should be. And it's our zoning map that is, is, I guess you could say outdated because the previous owner didn't want or didn't choose to change that zone. And so we have those applications often. The planning commission has actually kind of asked us about that and been alarmed at the number of those they're seeing. But it's really a natural thing and there's not much we can do about it because we can't, we can't do a blanket zone change on all the properties whenever we change our comprehensive plan. Because, well, I should say, we can do that, but it is more, it's it's seen as more invasive of of individual progress. We would, and it would be more expensive because we would basically have to give notice to every single property owner in that area and try to get them out to public hearings and give them the opportunity to weigh in on what they think their property should be zoned. It's usually much easier to just change the comprehensive plan and then let people change their zoning at a later time if they so choose. Anyway, that's a big tank. Any questions on that? It can be a dry subject and I talk fast. And so feel free to ask me or stop me or just tell me to move on because I'm happy to do that. All right. Code enforcement.
Move on, please.
You got it. Code enforcement. Favorite thing. This is, we're trying to make sure that these measures are useful to you and are really painting a good picture of what's really going on. And so Ethan and I have worked to try to, to improve the way we're recording our measures. On the top, in the top row, you'll have the case status. And this is relative, a little bit new. We've decided to split out complaints from officer initiated violations so that you can see what are we getting calls, what are the number of things that we were getting calls about? And what are the number of violations that our officer has actually found himself? And so here you see for January 2021, you got 12 complaints and two officer initiated. That's actually low. It should, that there's a lot of reasons for that, but it, it's, it will, you will see that go up in the next few months. Violations resolved just means that they've either, the compliance has been achieved in, in that it's no longer a case, basically. And then complaints noted with no violations found, we track, we track all of our complaints. A lot of times we'll get complaints and it's not actually, it's not actually against the company. It's, it may be annoying, it may be ugly, but there's just not something we can do about it. So we, we note those and we report to the complainant that, sorry, there's not anything you can do. Please work it out with your neighbor. And then open cases at the end of the period. So at the end of January, we had 21 open cases. That's active cases where we had, we, they're, they're somewhere in the enforcement process. We received a complaint for it. It's just not resolved yet. Hasn't been corrected. And then the number of citations and the number of abatements for the month. So and then this, this next